Just a reminder to everybody that this meeting is being recorded. So, just to keep that in mind. And welcome. This is going to be a very productive workshop. We're going to start out with a bang. We've got Carol Green and Ashley Stace all here to talk about legislative priorities. And I will tell you that Carol and I met yesterday with Byron Donalds and had, I thought, a very good meeting. So, I am going to turn it over to Carol. She's going to talk a little bit, but we're going to go over the legislative priorities. You've seen them. We only have two. We want to affirm that that's what we want to do going forward. We have one question from our meeting with Byron. And then we want to talk about the advocacy process, so.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Well, I think first and foremost, I was able to attend the opening of the Benita Springs High School. So, it's go bull sharks, right? Go bull sharks, got it! Anyway, it was a great event, and it was certainly well-attended. And I heard so many positive comments from the folks that I got a chance to say hi to. I'd like to go back to since we've met the last time on a workshop in this room, and we had an opportunity to have some dialogue. Things have been happening, actually. Ms. Morgan and the staff and others have been looking at the legislative requests, both policy and budget-wise. And we've been working on those to make sure that we get them into a format that is easily understood, because even though we know that we're going to have more backup information, we certainly are very much leaning towards that, the one-pager-type piece, to be able to make sure that they are actually read. I don't mean that disrespectfully. I mean that from the fact that everything moves so quickly during legislative session. And we do have all of the backup materials that we need, so we'll be able to share that with the staff. Obviously, we're talking about certification process, and we're also talking about Grow Your Own. We'll also be putting together, and I have given to Rob and to Ms. Morgan, the forms and the formats that we use that are actually for the staff in Tallahassee that actually plugs in all of the spots that need to be plugged in for the details.
Thank you.
Now, we know those are going to change. I mean, but it's a good starting point, and those may not change dramatically. So consequently, we feel that that's a good starting point to make sure that we're not playing catch-up, because we never want to play catch-up with any of these things. And that's why we're going ahead and doing some of the things that we're doing now, even though there is a lot of uncertainty in the air currently, too. As Ms. Morgan alluded to, we have had one meeting already. We've been working on getting meetings with all, not just our local delegation, but also looking into some of the leadership folks that we see that are going to be out there. Again, that's all changing because of the chamber changes that we have with the elections. We have a new President of the Senate. We have a new Speaker of the House. They will change committee structure a little bit, probably, and they will certainly change some of the rules. And we'll be looking for all of that as it starts flowing out to us. We were able to, by a meeting with Representative Donald yesterday, and which I'll get into in just a minute about my take on some of the things that he said, we were trying to pick his brain, too, to see what he's hearing. He plays his cards fairly close to the vest, although he did share some things, which I'll share with you in a few minutes. Everything's speculation right now. We don't see that there's going to be a tremendous change in our local, including, when I talk about local, I'm talking about Southwest Florida delegation. We think that's going to stay pretty much the same, at least this year. We're going to have a major change next year, obviously, because we have several terming out. So, really, the only race that we have going on is the one that will replace Representative Caldwell. So, that one, we're certainly keeping our eyes on to see what happens there. We're also keeping our eyes on what's happening across the state. We do believe that there is going to be somewhat of a shift, because there are a lot of very, very, very active races, races that, right now, it's too hard to call. Usually, it's not that case. Usually, you can see and read the tea leaves and know what's going on. We'll know a little bit more in a couple of weeks when we get past the primary, but at that point, we still will have some things up in the air. Things happen out of nowhere. I mean, you know, one day, you're on top, and the next day, there's a news article. So, which has just recently happened. I don't know if you follow what was going on in Sarasota, but we had a very active 50/50 polling race up there, and someone falsified information. And today, she's dropped out of the race, which she had to do. So, that's what I'm saying. Things can change very, very quickly in politics. We also have the amendments that are going on the ballot. Amendment eight, we're going to have to monitor and see what happens there and see exactly, you know, where that lands. I know it's still tied up in the courts. I know that the League of Women Voters are trying adamantly to press the issue that the fact that they believe that it is not easy to determine what that language means. I think I could safely say, as a citizen of the state of Florida, there's probably four or five of the amendments that I feel that way about. But that being said, that's, you know, tied up in the courts, as are some of the others. And on to what we're going to be dealing with as far as education goes this year in Representative Donald's meeting. We know that it is his desire to serve in his legislative career in education. He made that abundantly clear. We laid that out on the table, where are you going, where are you going, where are you going to be placed, et cetera, et cetera. He very much hopes to, if he gets his druthers, what I'm reading between the lines is he would really very much like to be the Education Appropriations Chairman. And although that's dealing with dollars and cents, it's also really dealing with policy, because those two things do go hand in hand. So, he does understand that. He was very interested in talking about certification. He was very, he brought that up before we did. He brought up career paths before we did. So, those were things that we thought were very interesting. He brought up categoricals before we did. So, those things all came up coming from him. He took the command of the meeting, if you will, and just laid out what his vision is in that regard. And he is very concerned about certification, and that was, excuse me.
What's his background?
He's actually a financial planner, is an accountant, accountant. I don't think he's a CPA, but he's...
He helped open the charter school down there. Mason Academy, him and his wife and Lictors.
But his line of work is...
So, that's why he knows about that, a lot about that.
Financial planning. So, that's, you know, that's his line of work. And of course, his wife is Erica Donalds.
And she is an accountant, I believe.
She is, and she serves on the Collier County School Board, and obviously, has been very active with the Constitutional Revision Commission. In fact, she's very active with Amendment eight, which we did talk about yesterday, just very, 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 very briefly, just because of her, you know, and the fact that she's pushing that so hard. And she's pushing it based on the fact that she believes it gives, this is her words, more choice. So, in regards to the third prong of that, the charter school piece is specific to what she's addressing at that. So, he is going to stay there. He is a sophomore. He's going into his sophomore term. So, normally, you would see that as being a timeframe, normally now, and normal, it doesn't always happen, a timeframe when people would start moving into being, you know, vice-chairman, those types of positions, kind of grooming them into the line of their legislative career. That is not the case now, because of the fact that we've had so many people who have decided to drop out, to run for other seats. I think we lost nine members who dropped out to run for other seats this year. So consequently, that shrinks down your field of people who are positioning themselves to be in leadership roles. He is certainly someone who his colleagues, in my opinion, his colleagues tend to admire, look up to, talk to, has a very, very cordial relationship with his colleagues. And so consequently, I think that that's probably true, that what he was telling us yesterday is that's probably where he is going to land, although, you know, no one knows for sure. And he certainly wasn't giving us the secret handshake yesterday. But at the same time, I think we got the wink and the nod. So consequently, we believe that that's going to happen. The fact that he was willing to bring up certification on his own, we thought that was a real plus. And he did look through all of the documents that were taken, the ones that are draft right now that we're going to be discussing as far as making sure where those are going. He had a couple of comments in that regard. One was specific, one of his biggest concerns, actually, had to do with the certification was about the non-English speaking piece, which that bothered him. That was the only thing in the whole document that he saw.
He said that was the only nonstarter from his point.
For his, for him.
Out of three.
Okay.
And so, we just wanted to know, what was the rationale, in case we missed something when we were talking to him?
Just that when you look at the data, there's a large percentage of folks who English is not their primary language, and they believe the reason they're not passing is not because they don't, they have the skill in their own language, and so that was why, simply because of the data shows that. But, I mean, if that's a deal breaker, I certainly would...
That was our assumption. And he basically said he was ready to put, he was ready to send his draft out to some other people. We said we needed to wait until we had this workshop today. And that was the only thing on that document he was concerned about.
And that is exactly back to that. He did say, as soon as it's okayed with everyone, and it's been massaged by everyone, and we get the formal approval, to get it to him electronically, and he will get it sent out to get some other feedback. The other...
And there was debate about that to begin with, so we thought, well, let's try.
So, well, so, so then, yeah, that will be the board's decision on what you want to do with that.
Okay.
You're running the meeting, right? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know if you wanted, I didn't know if you wanted me to recognize people or if you were doing that.
No, I'm going to wait. I want you to finish your piece, and if you want, we can come back to that, and I will ask my question later. But I do ask a question, and maybe somebody can do some researching on this for discussion. For the testing, what do they do for people who have certified disabilities? Do they allow them, when they take the test, to have time and a half? And that is my question, because for any other certification throughout the state of Florida, they are allowed to have that, those accommodations. And I, and also, it would be a question to ask of, what about being amenable to someone who is coming from another place, another, depending on the qualifications that they have, if they are coming here with another language and it's not their primary language?
They don't.
Okay. All right. That, okay, we will discuss that later.
Should I go on?
Yeah, please.
Oh, Maryam.
So then, my only question is, am I understanding correctly that Representative Donald, that was not a deal breaker? He was going to pass, send it on anyway, even with that part, or he wanted that removed?
He wanted us to talk to you guys first. We asked him.
We didn't want to do anything until today.
Okay.
If I could just answer Ms. LaRivaire's question quickly about accommodations. The DOE website says that special arrangements, such as extra time, may be made for examinees who have visual impairments, hearing impairments, physical disabilities, or specific learning disabilities. Reasonable accommodations will be provided where possible. So, they do, and there's a process, there's a form they have to fill out.
Okay. So, good. They do the same thing as it happens with other certifications. Okay, thank you.
So, that's all covered, then?
Yes. Thank you.
So then, that will be part of our discussion today, or the discussion that the board has. The other thing that, and let's switch gears for just a minute now and talk about the Grow Your Own teacher program. He was good about that, too. He thought that that was something that he could get behind. He wanted the numbers on it. We were able to share with him preliminary numbers that we had, obviously, saying preliminary because of the fact that we have to make sure that we have that passed by the board. But we also talked about loan forgiveness in that timeframe, too, talking about, is loan forgiveness something we would like to add to that mix? So, that needs to be discussed, too, in that regard. So, because I believe very strongly in the fact that whenever you have a captive audience that you should make an ask, I sat right there and said, so you'll file all this for us, right? And I didn't get a no.
But what he said was, if I'm the committee chair, I can't file it, so...
But I had an answer for that, and told him very plainly that, yes, I understood that, because I have been a committee chair, and that when you're a committee chair, the wonderful thing about being the committee chair is that you then assign that job to someone else.
And you smile.
And I smiled. And so, he didn't say no. He said, it was a maybe, but it was at the same time, you know, it was the ask. So, we can go back to that now after it's actually passed, and he has a chance to have staff really look at that. Now, he was very interested in, as I said, one of the things that he wanted to bring up was career paths. And it was very fortuitous because of the fact that we'd just been to, I had just been to Benita High School and was very impressed with some of the things that were going on there, too. And so, we did make an ask right then to invite him to come and tour the high school and have an opportunity for him to learn a little bit more about some of the things that we are doing in a very positive way about career path. And Ms. Morgan was very good to start talking about some of the things that are happening, not just foundation-wise, because we did have a long conversation about foundation, but also what was happening with Ms. Owens, with Sarah Owens, and the Community Foundation, some of those things that are going on here in a very positive way. He was very anxious to hear more about that. So, I'll be working closely with his staff to find time whenever we can actually bring him to Benita High School, and he would choose to do that probably the first week of November, something like that. So, that's what we'll be gearing for right now, to do that. And he was excited to do that. He thought that would be a really good idea.
Yeah, and we also, we talked a little bit about the career and tech academies and about the, I mean, the tech schools and the cap academies. And so, to kill sort of two birds with one stone, so to speak, he would like Rita Davis and also Brian Mangan to do the tour of Benita Springs High School with him, so that he can ask all of the questions that he has and get as much information as he can about where we're going with career education. So, we said we would work on it.
Hopefully, he would be open to look at a couple of our other high schools to see what options we have are going on.
Basically, he was saying, he's got to get around, but, you know, there are limitations on how much visitation he can do. And so, he was really looking for us to take this one opportunity. And then, if he wants to follow it up, he can certainly do that. But we want to get at least...
So, the onus that is on, like, for me, to make sure our delegation, I am taking them, so they go and they share with him, so that they are in communication with him in that process. Okay. Thank you.
The other thing, the other meeting that we do have set in the next, within the next 10 days, actually, is with Senator Pasadomo, too. And Senator Pasadomo is another person who has very, very deep, committed feelings about education. She was, has been very strong with education, and obviously, she's in a very rapid move into leadership in the Senate. So, we all certainly want to continue our friendship. Many of us have had, been friends with her for a very long time. I know my relationship with Senator Pasadomo goes back to probably the mid-'90s, something like that. She actually helped me with one of my campaigns. So, we've gotten to be good friends over the years and share a lot of interests. So consequently, she is glad to meet with us, glad to talk to us about the things that we have that we're involved with. And as she continues on her path into a leadership role...
(phone rings)
Sorry.
I'm ready.
I love the song. As she moves into that, then we'll look forward to helping her, helping her and help make sure that that happens. If the Senate, in fact, still stays in the Republican majority, she could possibly end up being the President of the Senate in about four years. But the thing that's interesting about that is not what's going to happen in four years. The interesting thing about that is while she is on this path, she will continue to have those committee assignments and continue to be a person that's going to be behind the closed doors, if you will, in making a lot of decisions. So, that's a very important thing to remember. And as I said, she's been a good friend to us, to many of us through the years, and we look forward to continuing that relationship. The lead delegation, I have heard back from every one of them as of today, and they are all setting meetings. And those meetings are being set kind of as we speak. We're looking at dates and those types of things. But all four of the others, and that would be Representative Fitzhagen, who I'm sure most of you have seen some of the news on that, too, that she's on the shortlist with Mr. DeSantis, which is, you know, a wonderful, wonderful honor. And I did reach out to her over the weekend about that. And we have Representative Eagle, who is our delegation chair. We don't want to forget the fact that he is. Representative Rodriguez and I have had a couple of conversations in passing specific to the memorandum of understanding with Florida Gulf Coast University, and they're looking for a date for us to meet about the other priorities, too. And...
Lizbeth?
Oh, and Senator Lizbeth Benagusto, I'm sorry. All of a sudden, I had a brain freeze or something. And they, I just talked to her, her chief aide today, actually, on the phone, and they are, they're working something out so that we can make that happen. So, that's a wonderful thing to do. I also want to share with you that Ms. Stillwell had called me a few weeks ago, and we had a discussion at that time about press releases. And we do, you know, you send a lot of press releases out about a lot of positive things that are going on. And one of the things that she had asked, and I thought it was just really a great idea, and kudos to her for that, is, is that, about sending those releases out to our elected officials. And I think that's a really great thing to do.
Oh, yeah.
It's positive stuff, and regardless of who in the office reads it or not, they need to read something besides just what comes out into the media and the press. So, we really need to have them understand there's a lot of other things that are going on. I haven't heard any pushback from anybody about that. I think, again, I think it's a great idea, and I really appreciate her bringing that up, and thought, yes, this is something really positive that we can make sure is happening. And then the thing that you wanted me to also talk about is Tallahassee. And as much as I'd like to believe Tallahassee is way far out, it's not. It's going to be just like everything else. It's going to be here in the blink of an eye. Swearing in is going to happen two days before Thanksgiving. Bad planning on, I think, but at the same time, it's, in the Constitution, it's not really something that somebody just planned. I think at the time they did that, they never were thinking about the fact that some of us might be stuffing turkeys or doing something that a couple of days before Thanksgiving. But that's when they'll do swearing in. The one thing about that is it is a very ceremonial day. Consequently, there will not be a lot of business done. Most people, we're going to have a lot of newbies, we're going to have a lot of families there, and a lot of flowers. And so, it's not really a time when you're going to see a great deal of business accomplished. So consequently, I believe, not that anything has been set yet, but I believe very strongly that if they keep in, with keeping as what they have done in the past, that we will see probably at least one, maybe two committee meetings in December. So, we have to be ready to go on the day of organizational, even though some people are still going to be going, yes, but I just got elected 10 days ago. So, that's why we're looking to people like Byron and Kathleen to help us get positioned before that, because we'd like to get things drafted and things moving before we get to that point. So, that's one of the things that we really need to continue to think about. I know that there are times when, when we have group meetings that happen in Tallahassee, and that's, that's fine. You know, I certainly want to be involved in all of those to make sure that we, you know, make, make sure that we do one. My one big request, I guess, if I have one big request, my one big request is staying on message. And staying on message is something that we have to decide as a board. And when it comes down to our board priorities, I mean, there are other things that we can talk about, you know, and I don't really have a problem with that. But when it comes to the things that we're really focused on, those things are important to stay on message. We have to talk, we have to talk about other general things. That's, that's part of the, that's part of the responsibility of a board, you know, to talk about the money situations, you know, talk about the lack of money, talk about those types of things. I think all of those things are very important to talk about. But when it comes to our priorities on a local level, not the global level, we do need to stay on message. And in doing that, that my request would be that we have an opportunity to be with you at meetings. We, usually, I'm the one in Tallahassee unless I, unless, unless Ashley really starts missing Tallahassee, and then she comes and visits.
Do so much.
I know you do. And, and so, that, so when, when we have an opportunity to be there, if you have an opportunity to be there, if you're coming up, when, it's not a group coming up, if you're coming up as an individual for some meeting or something, if you just let me know, you know, we'll make sure and make arrangements to get together and do things and have meetings, because I am there. So, that's something that I think is very important. There may come a time whenever I need somebody there to testify, to talk about our projects. And I'll be able to try and give you that information as quickly as possible, so someone can come and be with me. I know that we have to be very sensitive to sunshine law, and I am very sensitive to sunshine law. I've lived under sunshine law for many, many, many years, and we certainly will do that. That is not what I'm indicating when we come up in group. I think that it's very important that, that we match that, and I certainly can tell you that the legislators are going to be concerned about that as well, because they don't want to have that problem any more than I do. But at the same time, I think it really is important that when you have meetings, even if you're having meetings here in town, I just appreciate knowing that. And here's, here's one of the reasons why that's important to us. We take our responsibility as, as your lobbyist consultants very seriously. If we're in the room, such as I was with you, with Representative Donalds, and I'm the person who's going, he's going to see their, my face probably more in Tallahassee because of the fact that it's 400 miles from here, then I have an opportunity to say, yes, but remember when this was said, or remember what we talked about, or just to make sure that everybody stays on the same page. I cannot do that if I didn't, if I didn't hear it, if I wasn't part of it. So, I just ask that we try and keep that, those outside meetings to a minimum, and if they do happen, if you can fill me in on what's going on, I really, really, really appreciate that, because it, it just makes it work so much better, our partnership works so much better, if you will, when it comes to that. And even when it comes to difficult discussions, those things can happen, you know, with me and them, too, and sometimes that helps to, to find our way, our path, if you will. I'm going to take a deep breath.
Questions?
Concerns? Observations?
What's the cost of Grow Your Own? Like, what are we asking?
Couple hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's...
How much?
Couple hundred thousand.
It's not big. It's, it's under $500,000. I had $300,000 in my mind off the top of my head, Chris, but I don't, I, I'm doing that off the top of my head, too. But we did, what we shared with him, he didn't, he didn't even...
Three hundred's not.
No, it's not, it's not a problem at all. And those are the things that the format that I have sent over to your staff can look at and see, because when you start actually putting figures down, I think you may find that it will, my guess is it's going to go up a little bit from what you originally thought, just because of the details that they may need.
Sure.
And what about the, the cost of changes to the general knowledge test? What's the potential savings to the district in not having to provide that test prep? And how would that increase teacher retention? Is that information we should include in the ask?
Not in the ask, but certainly in the documentation.
It's in the documentation, yes. And I have all of the documentation, documentation on each one of those. One's probably about three pages, the other's about five or six. And those will all be shared electronically with the staff.
Okay. And then I have concerns about limiting, limiting it to just those two items. I feel like if Byron Donalds is, in fact, on the fast track to leadership, shouldn't we be talking to him about things that are going to take several years to change, like the restoration of .5 mil for capital, like giving us more flexibility in terms of barriers to choice? You know, why can't, why can't we do some of the things in our schools that charter schools can do that we can't do because of statute? I think that's a longer-term fix. What about unfunded mandates? I have huge concern about safety and security in particular, funding for safety and security. It was only partially funded this year, and it was a one-time hit. And obviously, water quality is going to be the big issue this year. So, does that mean that they're going to take away from us? And that, I think, is an issue that all governing bodies in Lee County can get behind.
Yes. And just if I might say right now to you and to the entire board, whenever I'm talking about staying on message, and I hope that I made myself clear, I'm not talking about the fact that this is all you can talk about. I think it's very important to talk about unfunded mandates. I think it's very important to talk about school safety. I think it's very important to talk about those things. So, that comes down to...
I understand that, but as I go out and I educate the public on the half penny sales tax, I'm able to point back to our legislative priorities over the past several years and say, we have repeatedly asked for restoration of the .5 mil. And if we don't make these things part of our official platform, I don't know how we, we justify the kind of ask we're making this year if we have to make that kind of a plea to the public in the future. Does that make sense?
It does make sense. And I guess what I'm trying to do is, in an effort to reestablish a relationship with our delegation, I'm looking at, we have local issues, state issues, state issues, and the funding issues. The local issue is a teacher shortage. And we are, we're working with Carol, and our agenda with Carol as school district is to deal with the teacher shortage. On the other hand, I think that when FSBA comes out with its platform, which really we want to deal statewide with everything you've mentioned, we have every right to go in and say, as they know, many of FSBA, this is also an opposition. But I am, I frankly, I'm uncomfortable when we've been told they will work with us on their terms, and only on their terms, to jeopardize something that we have gotten clear message from the potential leader about, to jeopardize that message by confronting them on things that they choose not to. That doesn't mean you can't tell the public.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking about confronting. I'm talking about it being part of our platform that we give to the public. You know, we educate our education community about our platform, and we need parents and community members to know that we are asking for improvements in the FDIP. We are asking for them to not roll back the RLE again, as they have done year after year after year. You know, like, that's, that's what I'm talking about. We don't have to walk in there and get in their face and say, you need to give us more money. I get that the primary focus of our conversation should be this local part, but in terms of our official platform, I feel like those items really need to be on there.
And I have a question, too. When you talk about the organization, when I say FSBA, I always, I sometimes get those letters mixed around. But there, we are connect, we are connected with them, too, so that we make sure that we see what they put out. We certainly have that as part of the thing that we can use as far as education goes, too. And to Ms. Morgan's point, yeah, I don't think those things need to be swept under the rug at all. I think that those are statewide issues that we certainly can share, that we support. I absolutely, I absolutely support that.
I'm sorry. I heard what you were saying, that's high degree, that that needs to be part of our platform. We're working with Carol. We're really focused on our local delegation right here, interested in these two things.
Let me just ask one more question before we go on. Lab school, why isn't that in there?
Oh, it, only because I didn't read it in my notes.
Okay.
But it's there, and everybody's happy about that, too, and that, and I apologize for that. One of the things that we are very happy about, we, I have connected directly with the lobbyists for Florida Gulf Coast University, so we're working hand-in-hand to make sure that when that actual ask, whatever that determination is about what it is, that we will do that hand-in-hand. She and I have made that commitment. She and I have known each other for many, many, many years, so we talked even just as of last week, I think it was, to start talking about what their thing, what their role is and what our role is, so that she and I are not at crosshairs with that. So, that is, it's actually in my notes.
And I'm going to, I'm going to ask Dr. Atkins to address that, because based on what I heard Mike Martin say at the foundation meeting, there really isn't a significant ask going into this year with the MOU. Essentially, what you all are working out are your relationships between their staff and our staff, and programmatically, what kinds of things you're going to do. And so, there is, in fact, no real ask of the delegation at this point.
Not at this time right now. What Dr. Creel and Dr. Hyne are, they've got a small committee that is working primarily with developing the concept more fully in terms of what that collaboration is going to look like, you know, who's going to be responsible for what. There might be, there could potentially be a small ask, but it wouldn't be anything too significant. I think it's mainly just trying to get everyone, everybody on board with the concept, and then gearing up for the following year, which would probably be something much larger.
And that has come up in our conversations, and people are, that's another one of those things that I think people can step back, sit back and go, let's all be really proud of this and really embrace this. And I think it's something we can really brag about. And that, Ms. Cohen, the government relations person there at FGCU, she's been there for a number of years and actually used to be an aide to one of our local legislators, so she understands the process very well. She's been part of the process very well. And so, when she and I had a conversation last week, it really was just to say, we'll keep, she and I will keep in contact from our end of it, so that when, and she shared with me just exactly what you're saying, and I shared with her that we were having a workshop today, and I thought that that was what was going to come out of this workshop. So, we're all on the same page.
I also want to say, when I heard Dr. Martin speak, he referred to a meeting that he had had with Senator Ben Equesto. And apparently, what they, the members of the delegation are hearing is lab school. And there is lab school in legislation. And she was making the assumption that we were talking about the lab school in legislation when we are not. And so, he believed he walked away from the meeting with her having a much clearer idea of what it was we were trying to accomplish. So, I'm just letting you know, when you speak to people.
People use that term, they've used that term with me, too, so I'm glad you're bringing that up.
So, just to that, just to that point, we don't have a formal name yet, but we're trying to refer to it in terms of collaborative school, innovation school, you know, until we come up with something a little bit more formal to try to distance itself from the formal lab definition the state of Florida, you know, has been used to.
I'm sorry, I'm thinking progressive school.
You and I need to have a discussion about that, too. An addendum to the discussion we've already had.
Personal, passionate, progressive.
School. Well, part of my notes here are that with regard to the discussion about freedom for us with choice, you'll recall, Betsy DeVos, she doesn't care what word goes in front of the word school, whether it's private school, charter school, or public school, as long as students have choice. And we in Lee County have the best system of traditional public school choice in the state, and we've been recognized for that by Rodriguez, we've been recognized for that by the state when Mark Moore went up there and presented. So, I feel like we need to talk about the strength of this system so that it can be shown more statewide, and they can take those barriers out of our way in a long-term planning kind of way.
And I welcome a change in the name.
Okay.
And I did, I, and I just might, I had my finger up, and I apologize. The general knowledge in and of itself is statewide issue. And so, you know, we are addressing statewide issues, and so, I just want to go agree with Ms. Patrica in that I know our district advisory council and others want to hear words and information so they can be communicating to people about what needs are. And I would like a follow-up meeting with you, Carol, I guess, to talk about something I would like to see happen, so that we are able to, I would like to get to the point where our, this may be, you know, this may be just a dream, but I would like to get to the point where our legislative delegation will vote in a way that we don't necessarily want them to vote. But I want them to be able to say, as I am making this vote, I'm going to let you know that this will have, while this is, for the state overall, this may look good, but I want you to know that for the impact of the people that I serve, this will be negative. Because they need, I want them to be aware of how that impacted, and I get that they have to see a whole picture. And I, you know, I totally, I get everything, but I would like for them to be able to have enough knowledge so that they are aware of how, they are truly aware of how this affects us. And I believe that's going to come with relationships and time. But that is a, that is a, that is a dream that I would like to see happen. Whether it can or not, I don't know.
Dreams are good.
Do we have any options, just in case the November election is not in our favor? Do we have any options within our platform then to begin talking about funding for capital, for growth?
If we see a major change in Tallahassee, I don't see that major change coming through the legislature. The major change may actually happen in the executive branch, which then becomes a totally different subject matter. Not that it's something that we ignore, we never ignore the executive, just so you know, we never ignore the executive branch. Ash and I both came out of the executive branch service of two years, so we certainly understand the importance when it comes to the new, and there'll be new appointments regardless. I mean, you're going to see, you're going to see a lot of new faces in the executive cabinet. So, that's something that we always have to be aware of. Legislatively speaking, the, everything I've looked at tells me that it's going to stay very stable in the Senate and the House, which is our first level.
That's not what she's asking. She's asking, in the very, very, very unlikely event that the referendum does not pass.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're talking about the referendum. I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't, I.
Am I right? Is that what you were asking?
Yes, that's exactly what I was getting at.
So, if the referendum, the, we're talking about the half penny now, if we see that that doesn't go the way that we would like for it to go?
So, for example, you know, just a couple, just a couple thoughts. We had had previously in our platform, restoration of 2.0 mils, that would be in alignment with, if the referendum were unsuccessful, you know, potential fallback. The second option, we also had in our platform last year, a high-growth district piece of legislation, where you looked at that, tried to change that formula. And then, you know, thinking forward, I think that maybe even getting a little bit more progressive than that language, trying to tweak that language, but really address the issue at hand, which is, this is one of only six rapidly growing school districts, and so I can understand from their perspective why a 2.0 mil restoration may not be a good statewide option, but what about an option for a school district that's growing at the rate of speed that we are, at least during the term at which we are growing? So, you know, some of the concerns that I've heard some of our delegation talk about is, you know, once you pass something, it'll never, you know, talking about the referendum, it'll never go away. All right, well, our sun sets in 10 years. However, having said that, I get the feeling, what about something that is dependent upon the rapid growth that we see here? Because the bottom line is, you know, we are over, you know, I mean, we are over capacity in the east, we're over capacity in the south, at 17 portables at Lehigh Senior, right now is an example.
How many portables totally? 100 and 30?
I don't know, it's off my head. Someone get that figure for you. But, but you know, just to, if it doesn't pass, we still have the issue at hand, and I really don't think that we want to, and I don't think our local delegation wants us to be in a position of going out and borrowing dollars, because that is also incurring debt, would not be something I think they should support. But, you know, you see what I mean? I mean, something like that high growth last year, but I think the high growth last year just wasn't far enough to really address the issue.
It's only like 5 million, right? Wouldn't it have really brought in like 5 million?
Yes.
What I would suggest to your point, then, Ms. Cuckle, is, I would suggest that we, my advice to you, and is that we be prepared with looking at that documentation, building on that, so that if we are caught in a situation where we have to pivot very quickly, that we're ready to pivot. And I think that that's a very good point that you bring up, and I think that because we do have something that we actually had in the hopper last year that just didn't quite get to that point, and I do remember reading all of that, that you put out, if we can tweak that, and I, you know, and find that to be in a situation of where we could have something salable to whoever we need to do that with.
It doesn't have to be part of our platform upfront. We can always amend our.
Absolutely. And that was what I would suggest we would do, is we would, you know, the election's on November 6th, when we see what actually happens on November 7th, we have another meeting and we, you know, and we have a new platform that's, you know.
But we need to be prepared.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
In the averaging their situation.
Yes, ma'am.
And, well, I support the half mil. On the other hand, the long-term solution to this is a formula for any district in the state, any growing district. And so, capital funds are based upon, or a portion of capital funds specifically directed to either construction or maintenance, however they want to do that, that has to be in place, otherwise districts are really going to be behind the eight ball in terms of borrowing money, and eventually, we will max out. And then, where are we?
Yes, I, I hear exactly what you're saying, and I think it's an excellent point.
So, I would suggest, at this point, what Carol and I need is just affirmation that you're okay with the two documents, so that we can continue our meetings with the delegation. Meanwhile, let's go back and look at last year's platform, and let's, let staff put together a recommended platform and brief it to us. There's no reason we can't adopt the same platform we had last year with these two items in it. I mean, that's, that's how I would like to proceed if everybody's.
And that's not, that's not off-base to have, you know, to have that done?
Are we going to discuss item, option three, though, before we?
Whether or not to keep it.
I want to make sure we have that, don't forget to discuss how we all feel about option three.
Oh, the option three, yes.
For the general knowledge piece.
And I did find the number on Grow Your Own, the overall scholarship cost in that regard is 356,832 and 35 cents.
And you all remember some of the feedback, I mean, I know that Ms. Patrica and I, when we met, some of the members with Carol, some of the members in the delegation, and Senator Ben Equesto, specifically, the quest last year was very large, such a large jump from the year before, but I think this is a little bit more in alignment with what they were forward in the support.
And they say it usually takes three years to get something like this press motion, right? So, this is year three. The, how many people in our district, Dr. Pruitt, are impacted by the English language piece of the, or the alternate language piece of this?
I don't have an exact number, but, I mean, I would be comfortable not having that piece in there for a more successful outcome.
I can also tell you that I did find the document while we've been talking back and forth here, and at the cost of teacher termination due to non-compliance with general knowledge test requirements over a three-year period, it's looking at fiscal year 17, it is $940,000. And that's just that lump sum kind of idea for you.
And that doesn't, you know, that doesn't really include the loss of the professional development and the experienced teacher and that, you know, because you realize your best gains in that first year, and then second, two and three is where you get the other big gains, and that's where you're losing in year one and two.
Would they be amenable, and I get not providing it in other languages, I can go along with that. Would they be amenable to some type of, I mean, we'd have to work with others to kind of what the criteria would be where this would be allowed, where there would be allowed the opportunity, it does take more time to process the language. Would there be the opportunity for them, much like we do for U.S.A. students, allow them, maybe not time and a half, but work with the timing so that it allows them the time to fully process or have access to a translation piece? And I'm not necessarily thinking so much about us within Lee County, it didn't impact us as much. But I know that Orange County hired many teachers from Puerto Rico when they were coming, when everyone was fleeing. And they have amazing teachers, but they're also having difficulty with this general knowledge test even. And so, my question would be, what can we do to allow something to assist those that truly, language may be a problem where they would need a little more time processing and comprehending, and so that they're thinking logically, sometimes just that rushing.
Representative Donalds has a major heartburn with that.
Okay.
He believes, and this is what I heard, he believes very strongly that if you're not proficient in English, then we really have a problem with you.
Okay.
And the fact is, because when you're, the flip side is that when you're teaching, it is fast-paced and the processing does need to be, and so, that's.
I get that. So, I understand.
Automatic, yeah.
I understand.
So, just 221 portables currently deployed in the school district, some leased, some that we own.
221?
221 portables.
And that includes all of our pre-K portables and those others that are under a different funding piece.
And just so Mr. Morris breaking it down for us, 41 scheduled for replacement, AKA disposal of hurricane damage. We've got 39 federally owned EdStar pre-K, 31 leased, 151 that the district owns. We got thirty-nine federally owned EdStar pre-K, thirty-one leased, one hundred and fifty-one that the district owns, two hundred and twenty-one currently deployed.
Two hundred and twenty?
Two hundred and twenty-one currently deployed.
Okay.
You'll send that to us?
Yes.
Thank you.
So when we're looking at the portables then, what is the cost of one portable to be fitted with electricity and water and set up?
Last number, and I'll let him correct me, but it was approximately fifty, it's a fifty thousand to deploy a portable.
And that's cheaper since we started doing it ourselves, right?
Fifteen or fifty?
Fifty.
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 That's for delivery, setup, insulation, of security, electricity.
But that doesn't count then taking care of the sidewalks and the over.
And you have to remember that typical life expectancy is only about a decade. That's why they've started leasing them, you know, because we don't, we don't want to be in that business. They also are the ones that are most heavily hit. If we do have a weather event such as a hurricane, that was a huge tornado, huge pieces of our damage during Irma. They're just not a very good option for us really.
If you would clarify that, the fifty thousand, I understand that's about all of the setup, et cetera, that you have. But you also have either the rent or the purchase of the unit itself. So that isn't, so that isn't, that isn't a total figure.
Right.
Yeah, I think what's going to have to happen is you're going to have to figure out within the administration who works up, takes responsibility for work, working up that alternative proposal, you know, getting it back to the board. And the board can submit any questions to you that they feel need to be covered in the background documentation of that proposal. Does that work?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else, Carol, Ashley?
No, other than just having, having the decision made by the board on what you want to do about going forward, and specifically to these two, and, and to the, the thing we're not calling lab school.
The progressive school.
The progressive school, that's the one, yeah.
Nice for coming out in the twenties.
So, wait a minute, so, general knowledge test. Can I see a thumbs up for the general knowledge, or thumbs down or whatever, for the general knowledge test without item three? Okay, so that's good. And we don't have anything we need to, we talked about changing on the other. Can I see a thumbs up, thumbs? Okay, so we're good to go. So we, we'll start sending that out, and then the administration will work on the four platform documents.
The only other thing I would ask is that in, in regards to, to the decision that's made here, we do have the back, the backup documentation. I just need to make sure that someone besides just the two of us look that over to make sure it's all accurate and, and the numbers wise, et cetera, so that, that we're not caught in a situation of not giving out proper information. Because we will be using this too. It's not that this won't be used, but it's, but, you know, this is going to be ideal for that conversation.
Is that what was in our backup materials today? It was in, that was in backup materials previously. I know it was sent to us, because I know I've read it.
I don't have any backup materials.
Can you email it to us, please?
Yeah, I, I.
Actually, it's, it's Angela's work. Yeah, she's, she can send it out to us.
Okay. These are the two form, the, the two forms that, yeah.
Just go over it, make sure you're happy with the numbers and everything.
Yeah, and then, yeah, and then just copy Ashley and, and that then we'll be good. And then we'll have it to, to go forward. And then, then are we good to go with getting this printed up so I can send it out to Representative Donalds? With the changes?
Typically, the board votes on the platform.
Okay.
I'm looking at Susan, because I'm trying to remember what month that was.
September, usually.
Depends on when the session is next year, but usually.
It's in March, so.
Usually it's in late August or in September.
We do, but we've had informal discussions with them in meetings before it was formally adopted.
No, I understand that there's a cost to printing out all this information.
Oh, no, no, we're not printing.
Okay.
We're just, we're just talking about putting it on letterhead with the board's.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, this is.
So that they can start planning on bill, on a bill.
And if we put it on the board, a, a letterhead, then it's not just, Ms. Morgan's bringing this to you, it's the board's official action.
Right, 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 right. And, and yeah, we will give you to do it later, but we're trying to get our act together earlier. So, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, we can come forward with the two of these right away, and then we can just add on.
They can start working on the bill, any bill making.
Okay. All right?
I'm good.
I'm fine.
Good, everybody good, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Well done ladies, thank you.
You're right, it is three o'clock. I heard some thunder rumbling out there too.
You can't get your shoes wet.
I can't get my shoes wet.
Got to go.
Yeah, it's all, it is all about the shoes. My husband would tell you that.
You know about this, don't you? Doesn't Fisher tell you it's all about?
I think they look great. I love the color.
A life short, you got to buy the shoes and eat the cake.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a ten-minute break, and we'll come back and talk about the evaluation instruments. I'm sorry.
Dr. Carlin, Dr. McCullers, Superintendent's Evaluation Instrument. I know that they'd like to put this in. So, Dr. Carlin, you're on.
All right. Dr. McCullers, we'll turn it right over to you. How do you like that?
So, we meet again. All right. So, just to make sure that I've explained what you have in front of you. We had five A and five B, which was delivered to you a couple of weeks ago, I think. And then just recently, you got an update, which is seven A and seven B. And it's just the next generation with added in the comments that I received from board members.
The new and improved Microsoft.
I'm sorry?
New and improved Microsoft.
The new and improved. And they're not, you know, they're not big changes. It's mostly cleaning up, removing some redundant language, rephrasing for clarity. Nothing, a couple of items were, just seemed to be in the wrong standards, so we moved them around a little. It's not substantive changes. So whichever one you're prepared to look at, we can go version five or version seven, whichever one you're more familiar with. It doesn't really matter. But I have, there are a couple of questions that we need to know because the timeframe is close. We want this to be ready to roll for you. So I need, in order to finish one of the other, we have to pick one or the other.
Yes.
And I just need to know what you would like that to be.
Can I jump in?
Please.
I really liked five A, the specific subcategories on the left. I really liked that part of five A, but I really liked the rubric part of five B. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So can, would there be any interest in combining them? Because I feel like the rubric in five B is more, it explains it better. And it gives me a better feel for what do you mean by highly effective? What do you mean by effective? What do you mean by needs improvement? And the general categories on the left-hand side in five B were very long and very broad. And it's difficult to evaluate all of the things in that category based on the rubric that was provided.
So are you suggesting then that we're not looking at the seven A?
Well, they're the same thing. They're basically the same thing with just so.
They've just had.
Yeah. So I like the.
Yeah, because I looked at those at length in preparation for this with the understanding that those included comments.
Yeah, I'm included. I'm looking at seven A.
Yeah.
They're basically, so my comments are, I like the subcategories in seven A on the left-hand side. But I like the rubric in seven B that goes along with each of the evaluation.
It's a very, the rubric in B is more aligned to how, it stays focused on the same skill and shows degrees.
Exactly.
It's not.
That's right.
It's varied. It's the way a true rubric should be designed. Personal opinion, but, and research that's out there, it's a very well-designed rubric.
Elisa, I'm curious, because you and Chris were the ones who struggled most with this as a new instrument when you first came on the board.
Well, I actually agree with Chris because that, because it defines it a little more simplified, I want to say, for me. Yeah.
And this has to be part of the onboarding process.
Yes, yes.
Meaning just give a copy or a link, better, yeah, give a link.
So is that.
Be familiar with it until it's just.
Well, yeah, because you have, I mean, you know, we work with him from day one. And if we don't know the categories of evaluation, when it comes time to evaluate him, then we're not looking, we're not necessarily looking at that in our interactions with him.
Ms. Fisher? So are we looking at A now, even though you like the rubric in B better?
Well, as I understood the comment, it was the left-hand column indicators in the orange or tan, whatever you would call that, that lighter color. But not use those descriptors in the four right-hand columns. Instead, use the style from B, which is the degrees of intensity and frequency and so on. It would be a rewrite. It would be a whole new version C, but.
We'll do it.
We'll do it.
No worries. It's not starting from scratch, though. It's copying and pasting.
It's copying and pasting.
Many cases. Oh, the one thing that I did like about A versus B was, for example, the indicators under the standards made sense to me in Form A far more than some of the indicators in Form B. For example, under human capital management promotes improvement in student achievement, that did not, it really felt to me like that aligned more under a different standard.
Yes.
And so that just gives an example. So I really believe the key indicators that are under each of those standards align with the standards that we're looking for.
And I can give some attention to that as I go through it and refine when I can, when it's clear what the intent was. There's a, there are a lot of words here.
Yes.
And we're trying to line them up in a couple of directions. So if you will give me the latitude to make those kind of refinements as we go, to make sense of it, I think, I think it'll work.
And personally, I would, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I would have rather, this was the type of instrument I wanted to see originally. But we had former, we had board members at the time that wanted to see that quality design. And so we tried to do a slow change. So this fully attends more specifically and also gives better, I think, Dr. Atkins, what do you believe, what do you think about these? What are your thoughts? Do you find that these are more tangible to fully grasp and work with as an administrator, as the superintendent with your cabinet, with staff, versus what you had before?
Good question. In a way, yes.
Okay.
It's just a lot. Couple in your head.
Okay.
You know.
I agree. There's a awful lot.
It's a lot. And it's, you know, when I, when I was, but, you know, I want you all to do what, you do, it's your instrument. It's your, it's your instrument.
I'm just wondering if there may be some overlapping and we can, there may be some things that are really truly essential pieces and some that are, that may not be.
So then if I could finish my comment that I was going to start before, I'm going to say this now. I found it extremely cumbersome. I found some of the standards and a lot of the indicators repetitive and redundant. So I feel like it could be shortened and simplified quite a bit and still deliver the same information that we're looking for as a governance team. Because there's a lot of repetitiveness, repetitiveness in there.
And that was like the old one as well.
And, well, yes. And unless, and I spent like two and a half hours going through seven A and seven B. And then I thought, okay, this is a lot to read. It takes a long time. And I made notes and highlighted my own redundancies and I'm thinking this is saying the same thing. And just for instance, the human capital management and the leadership that have so many indicators under those.
Are you looking at Form A or Form B?
Well, of course, I was looking at both, but right now I'm looking at A, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, now he's in V, okay.
Sorry, I'm trying to catch up. There's A.
There we go.
Yeah. And I just, just like what you just said, is that I think that there are probably things in there that deliver the message and we don't have to say it that many times.
So did you provide that feedback to him?
I did.
I mean to point at you, sorry.
Yes, no, it's fine. In fact, in fact, you know, to be fair, that was a pretty common suggestion that the document is long. It's almost thirty pages without a cover sheet, without scoring, and without board member comments, which I presume is still want to do. So the finished, and that's a discussion I want to get to. But if we do add comments, you'll end up possibly with a forty-page document for each of you.
That's a lot.
That's a lot to deal with.
Right. And it's, one of the things that I discovered was that I was sitting there thinking, okay, now what would I do with this? And then how would it be compiled? I mean, because it is so much.
Right.
Yet, I think the underlying message that we're looking to deliver about the achievement of the superintendent with the skills and the practices that are connected with the standards could be shortened considerably.
I can agree with that.
Dr. Koppel?
I think there's another aspect of it, too, that we want to consider when we're revising it or shortening it. And some of these still are pretty subjective, just like the first one, that the expectation or expectations are, A, I'm sorry. No, I'm on B. Expectations are clearly articulated and understood by all employees. So I want to say, as evidenced by, I think if some of these are not clearly defined in terms of how we're going to measure it, it becomes subjective.
I agree.
And that's what happened to us last year. One person said, well, this was great, and the other person said it didn't meet my needs. So unless it's directly related to myself as a board member, I think the other things need to, we need to make sure that we have some evidence to be able to fit one of those four rubrics.
So you're.
We know to do that at the end.
Dr. Atkins, did you provide suggestions, your own suggestions edits, of what you thought might be more workable for you?
I gave him very little feedback.
But I got it and it's in there.
Yeah. I, again, I mean, I hate to say, I will just be honest. I mean, you're getting ready for the start of school and everything. This is, these are very lengthy documents. And I had gone through the previous drafts, and by the time I get to this set, I'm, I've got user fatigue and other things going on.
You're doing your job.
And I do believe, I really believe, this is, this is, it is guidance for superintendent, but it's also your instrument. What you want to see in an evaluative instrument, so.
But from my point of view, it's also an educational instrument. It's basically, the whole point is to get certain board members to understand what the role of the superintendent is and that they stick to things that are, that we agree are responsible to the superintendent.
Sometimes that's subjective, too, unless we have something specific.
No, I agree. But I'm just saying that.
Like all employees, you know, this first one, when you say all employees, well, I can go out and find one employee.
Well, that's a good. I didn't like the all in any of those.
Still, when it's in an evaluation form, it should be something that you can clearly define one way or the other. So I think that concept is good. I think we have to just be able to, and maybe we have a couple of sections of it that would come generally to the superintendent's role and other things that then have some supporting documentation or evidence or metrics.
I will say this. I wanted, I think that a superintendent should use their evaluation with their cabinet.
I agree.
Which is what I do. I share everybody's evaluation with my cabinet. We go over it. We discuss it in detail. And because I look at it as my evaluation, is the executive team's evaluation. And because there's things that are specific to human resources, to, you know, to facilities, to, you know, just different places. And so what this does do is, I think it does provide more information than the previous document did. Now, it is a lot, and, you know, if it can be streamlined, I think that's important. But I also think it's important to try to take out some of the subjectivity, which is what the, I think, the direction this is going. And provide an objective evaluation that then can be turned and used by the executive team to improve.
So I have a question I want to ask as we start to move forward. So Jeff and I have been listening because we want to hear what your comments are. I'm taking copious notes because then we'll go back and we'll honor your wishes. And we're hearing some themes here. When you look at the six standards, does anybody look at one of those and say, not appropriate? Or could be collapsed with, you know, standard one with standard four? That's where we'd like to move the conversation if we could. So have suggestions on that?
Well, I thought five and six could be collapsed. And I also thought one and two could be combined.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I mean, maybe better to combine rather than collapse is a better word.
Five and six?
So five and six and perhaps one and two.
That was what I, that was like an inclusion after my long, very.
Is that, is it agreeable or does that worry someone?
I'm trying to pull them up.
Yeah. It's a long document.
So five is referring to those executive skills to support improvement. And six is relative to looking at organizational, operational, and resource management. So there could be some overlap there, certainly. Could be.
Could be.
Yep. So other thoughts, opinions? We'll give everybody a moment to look.
My issue is with, standard one says, as the human capital manager, superintendent is not the human capital manager. The superintendent promotes improvement in leadership effectiveness and student achievement. And then you go on to.
Two.
To two. Educational leadership. So to me.
I do see that.
I can see.
Yeah.
Just some combination there. Okay. So if we do, you know, just, I'm just going to try to summarize after we have a couple of conversations. So if we start to, you know, combine one and two, as Mrs. Morgan and Mrs. Fisher just suggested, based on some conversation. And we look at five and six as an opportunity, now that gets you down to four standards, which may then give us some room to start looking at overlap, as Mrs. Fisher suggested, to start to alleviate some of that and work through that.
And see if we can find, is there a way that we could, this is a thought. In each of the indicators, if the indicator itself could be simplified, but much like we do for our academic plans, there's a hot link that you can click on that hot link and get all the other details of what you're looking for. Does that makes, do, does that make sense? Because then it allows for somebody to review and get the full understanding of all of that and then of all of the components. And then it's not, not as overwhelming. That's what we do, that's what we do for our teachers. We give them the resource pieces there, but then we have the hot links to go to for the more detailed messages.
Right. That was.
That's a thought.
That's a good thought and one I was going to hint at when I got to it. At some point, there will have to be a place for you to enter a rating and comments if you want. And, you know, some of the other, you know, the weighting, we have to discuss. If we go down to four categories, do you want twenty-five percent for each or do you want to weight? We used to weight one a little bit heavier than the others. It may not be that way since the way we bring these together, but I'll need to know. The, so what we could do in time is have quite a short instrument that was just, can you see this? Is this big enough? That was just, that was just the category labels. And you could hover over, that could be a link, and you could get to the full detail if you want it. That's certainly possible. I don't think I can do that for this round, though.
I understand.
I could give you the full document as a document that you could look at, but the automation of it probably wouldn't work. The hovering and linking and all of, I, I, I can get it on my graduation, yes.
But this round of this evaluation would be happening.
I'm trying to get this to you this month. Is that right? So, so we will have to compromise a little bit on some functionality, if we can get the content that we want it. And then we can, we can make it shiny for next time.
Yeah, I think first time we do it anyway, we're going to run.
That's true.
Questions, we might as well not mine a lot, so we might as well do it in the round.
There will be feedback.
Yeah.
Because, because it's, it's, everything will be new, so.
Yeah.
And it's also important prior to, when we go through and we do that, that we do go ahead and workshop once we have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I'm not clear on what you mean by collapse, five and six. You mean take some of the stuff out of there or combine the two?
Combine the standards.
I don't see them as being related. I mean, obviously, you want a culture of achievement of efficiency in operations, but how are, to me, culture of achievement is not really consistent.
Well, we're, you know, we're evaluating the performance of the superintendent, not necessar, and his management on his, his team and his staff. And then their management of their teams as it goes down. So I think that we've gotten way into the weeds here as far as that goes because we're going to, like Jane said.
He doesn't have direct.
Look at as evidenced by. So the evidence that we see in, like, how do we measure culture of achievement?
Yeah.
You know, how do we measure that? Do we do a survey of the staff of all the school and the people in all the departments and say, what are their responses? And, you know, and he is responsible for leading the district and for holding his people accountable. But I don't know that we need all of those finite details to describe that. And then again, some things don't seem related to people who are not in the education system, you know, for a long time. And that's the other issue with board members is that we don't come from the same walk of life. So we may have a different perception of what some of these things mean. And that was, I just thought it was way too cumbersome and would take a way long time. And then it was hard to decide how you were going to score it and put your marks in and, and yet indicate that you know that this is being done. I mean, because we need the evidence. So that, that's another important piece that needs to be added, but we don't need all those words to describe.
No, I'm clear on that part. I just, I'm not clear on how we combine five and six. To me, they're not the same.
So can we, can we just real quickly look at five?
I just scrolled off of it.
Sorry.
Sorry.
So with.
So there's, five starts way here, okay.
So he uses a variety of executive skills to support district improvement and desired educational outcomes.
Wait, are you looking at?
Standard five, not seven B.
Seven B, thank you. Let me get rid of A. It'd be like a lot easier for me. Thank you.
Do you want me to switch to that?
No, no, no. I just want to know what, which form we're on.
I've got seven A up. And standard five.
Okay, so we are looking at seven A.
That's what I'm showing right now. I can switch however you like.
All right, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that we were all looking at the same component.
Right. And so here's, here's my question. And I heard some advocacy around using the gold column, as Jeff's mentioned, you know, for, in terms of the indicators. But then the rubric that travels across using language for five B, that was an initial conversation. And so if you look at that, if that is the direction we do want to head, and again, I'm not clear if that's been determined. I just wrote down a couple of topics. So we use five B, you're talking about district strategic plan, near and dear to my heart, I know yours too, quality, technology, data, safety, facilities, and aligning budget. And if you go into six, standard six, you will see many of those same topics identified, plus a few others with F, G, and H. So you do start to see some overlap if you're looking at the rubric for five B. That, that's what I would offer, just as a, as a thought, so.
When you're done with that discussion, another topic.
So when I look at five and eight, five eight, the superintendent develops a district-wide culture of achievement aligned with the district's vision of success for each student. And when I look at six, A, the superintendent leverages organizational, operational and resource management skills to support district improvement and achieves desired educational outcomes. That's where I see that it actually, standard six takes care of, embeds standard five.
Depending on how you itemize all of the indicators, yes.
Exactly. And, and then that, that would, then that's where you could collapse and then determine the indicators under there appropriately.
Um, combining one and two and five and six would, um, probably require, um, you know, some, some good rephrasing of the standards. And so you, you'd essentially see language you may not have seen before. I need to know if that's okay.
And I'm just happy with desired educational outcomes because we cannot go into the weeds. Because when I look at what's in five, what was in there, those look like great evaluate, great evaluational tools for principals within their, their smaller system. But when you look at the whole, it, it's too, too much for him to have his finger in all of those things.
Dr. Cuckle?
I have something not related to five A and six, and something overall. When, when we talk about it being too big, a thought is to begin small and build. And maybe look back through here to take out some things that we don't have measures for. Put them aside, not discard them, add them in as we do. And so here's an example. I'm in seven B, standard three. Okay? Models and maintains a level of respect for and from all administrators. Just that first thing, from and for all administrators. Do we have measurements for that at this point in time? It's something that's important to do that I think should be in a preface to this instrument, say that's important for us. But pull it out and not include it until we really have, do we serve everybody, every, survey everybody to see if they have respect for? And do we know that Greg has respect for? I mean, I, I think those things are.
That's hard to measure.
Are still way too subjective to add in at this point in time. However, in the long run, they may. Let's not get rid of them, but let's start with an instrument that's really manageable, that we already have documentation and processes to measure and build from there. That would be my recommendation. And I'm not gonna be here, but, but as I listen to all this conversation and, and have read through these, it's, it is overwhelming.
Oh, well, Lisa?
Well, I feel like we're just keep reinventing the wheel. I don't understand why there isn't a best practice to this and that other districts use. And then we look at those, I don't understand.
They're not as detailed as this.
This is very detailed. It says all.
I guess that's why it becomes complicated.
So many of the statements, all students or all staff. Well, everybody could find one student or one staff member that this doesn't apply to.
This, that was kinda how this started. I went out and I looked at best practices at other districts and I brought them together and, and gave them, and then they, like, the list of stuff I gave, I expected items to be eliminated from that list, but instead they were all put into these documents. And now we have all of this hugeness. And I did expect elimination to occur before we got to this point.
But these aren't good best practices.
No, no, I, I agree, I agree. I understand.
I'm not saying that, I just thought it'd be something.
I understand, but it does feel a little bit like we're talking about going back to the beginning again. And that's really scary. I don't wanna do that.
Yeah.
But maybe we have a section that says best practices and then we do a section that we were actually evaluating.
I, I think one of the key things too would be for Dr. Ak, when, when, whether it be through communication with Dr. Carlin and Dr. Atkins or, or however it takes place, you can identify which ones are, are that, that he can readily put his hands on and, and that is truly measurable and identifiable. And you've got the document, you've got the documents, you've got all of the artifacts. Some things that, that are on here are not necessary. Are, are clearly you can't measure. Uh, when I look at standard four and Roop and, um, am I in A? No, I, I understand, but I'm never going from back and forth. But if I look at s- standard four and seven B, we'll stay in seven B. Okay, I'm in B right now. Where it says, um, for indicator B clearly is measurable. Provides an opportunity for stakeholders to evaluate school district performance. We have, we are, those systems are almost fully and completely in place. So tho, that's an item that we are able to get data and we're able to see that those pieces are in place. And we can, and we can also see where, you know, where the areas are that we need to improve and we're not getting the, the information from. But when you look at, um, uses effective strategies to forge consensus for change, manage and monitor change and secure cooperation from key stakeholders implementing and implementing change, gathering artifacts for that is going to be cumbersome. Okay, put that one, that would be one, put that one aside, you know. Do you see what I, so that's what I thought.
And, and to follow up on that, if it's something that's really important to us, but we don't have measures for, then that's up to the board to, to build those in.
Exactly.
Or we bring recommendations forward for what that could look like.
For going forward so that we're able to include those in the, in future evaluations.
Yeah, so if we look at, if we look at the way the standards are, are listed, so we've got educational leadership, we have personal behavior, we have building relationships and we have executive skills, which may even be able to go up, uh, above educational leadership, executive skills. So, a- and I think that they should all look the same way. Like, like standard four, building relationships, colon, and then there's a little blurb about it. Then you have your indicators. But, so I think we need to be consistent and agree on what are those important standards. And I think that Dr. Athens really needs to help us with input about his perception of what are those standards that are, um, what he knows to be necessary to be a successful superintendent.
We did agree on those six. Our very fir, the six that are here, we agreed on those in our very first meeting. So that's why it feels to me like, a little bit like we're going back to the beginning because now we're reinventing something that we've already agreed upon.
And, and I would like to speak to him. My concern with what you're putting forward, Dr. Cuckle, is that just because we haven't got the standard doesn't, to me, doesn't mean we don't put it in there. Because that, just the fact we don't have it doesn't mean it needs to be there. And, and so I would say that, um, uh, if we have a standard for instructional leadership and, um, but we, we, we believe that the superintendent should be showing us evidence in a particular area. And the superintendent doesn't have a way to do that. It still needs to be in there. It still needs to be in there because that's his responsibility to put together that thing, to provide us with the information. We're not creating an instrument that gives the superintendent a highly effective rating in every single category. We're giving his superintendent an instrument and his, and his, his, um, uh, team. We're giving them something that tells them where this, where they strive and where they succeeded and where they failed. And, and there's always a strive. And if, if the standard's not there, then it's their responsibility to create that standard. We don't stop expecting it, so.
I'm just gonna throw one more thing out there. And that is that we have a number of experts in this room who are on the staff. And, and I don't know that I have really solicited any input from any of them, but I think it could be extremely valuable.
I agree.
I agree.
Because they're in the weeds with the superintendent all the time and they're in the weeds with the principals and the other stakeholders. So I really feel like they might be able to help us to focus in on what exactly is that we're looking for. I just don't feel.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Comfortable with this one.
Well, see, from my point of view, you look at what is the role of the CEO, okay? And then, and so the role of the CEO is to, is to staff the organization to be, is to somehow do human capital management, instructional leadership, personal behavior, building relationships, culture of achievement, organizational operator, operational and resource management. That's the role of the CEO. What are the categories that go underneath those? We've already had this discussion and we've agreed on these things. So I don't, I don't understand why we're going back over this again and again. I think the material is there. I think we need to trust Dr. McCullers to sit down. He knows this stuff. And if he, and if he feels that he can't handle it, I know there are people in the organization that he can talk to and, and, and get this done. We've laid out the framework. We've given a lot of information. You all know how to put together a document like this and you can do it. And I, I, I think that's just where we need to let it go.
I disagree.
Okay, sorry. Uh, where's everybody else?
I agree, I feel like we're doing the same thing all over again, spinning our wheels.
Thumbs up, thumbs down, thumbs across.
Well, I had hoped that we would have, you would have interjected and taken care of it before we got here, so.
Well, no, no, that wasn't, that's not fair because he.
Oh, no, I'm not blaming him.
No, yeah, but he couldn't, I, I, I mean, he's really just done, we've, we've given him to do up to this point.
I wish, I like what you're saying. Cause I think it would, we would, I think we would, we could have saved the meeting.
We know what we want. We know the categories, we've agreed on the categories. We like the, the way the rubric is done. That's enough direction.
It is.
For staff to take this instrument and, and make it workable for us to use this fall as an evaluation of the superintendent before we finalize the document. So, uh, that's my proposal. So I'm looking for thumbs up, thumbs down sideways. Okay, Mary's a no. All right, Mary, what would get you from noting?
It, it's way too cumbersome. I mean, it's not even, I mean, I know a lot of work went into this and we initially agreed. It's kinda like when you're writing a book. It goes to edit several times before you get your finished product and where the message you want. And I think what we're looking for here is a way to determine the success of the superintendent's skills and justice. So I think that can be done in a much more precise way.
And I think that's what we're talking about doing.
Yeah.
Yes, we are.
That's, that's, that's what we have written down several times here. I, 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 I get the idea that, I'll, I understand the, the direction to combine the A and B. And I, I certainly understand to can, make it more concise and more streamlined and more manageable. It's not manageable. I've been spending a good portion of my day scrolling, you know, working through these documents. They're long. So, um, but what I, what, we've already accomplished a great thing. The, the A and B combo, I couldn't have made that decision. I should not have made that decision for you. If I had that direction, I'll go that way. If you'll give me latitude to edit the way I would edit a grant proposal, which is nowhere to sacred. And it's gotta fit in the, in the page limit. I can do that too. I can go at it like that, but you may, I just wanna caution you, that you may end up seeing words you haven't seen. Things may be rephrased, you know, for, for conciseness and I may overdo it. So, you know. That's, that's, that's the, the risk.
And I don't, I don't.
Let me hack way up.
I think what he'll do, I mean, you know, I've done a number of these in, in my days as well that have been fairly lengthy documents, um, you know. And as much time as he's invested in, he's, he knows what, um, you know, where you've got some duplication, where you can do some streamlining, where you, and, and I think if he's given the license to do that, I think he's gonna produce something that will get, I think will meet everyone's need, including Mary's, to, to bring it to a little bit more of a, I think we all have that kind of a shared interest.
Okay.
And so can I ask one question? I know we had a board member that was working, was it Ms. Patrick or Ms. Morgan? What would be helpful is if we had some direction from you on, once we do sit and do a lot of wordsmithing, if we just have one of you work with us and it can be the board chair or whomever, just to take a look and just make sure we didn't lose the essence of something. And then make that person kind of our, our liaison, if that would be acceptable.
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep going.
That would be great.
Okay, that would be wonderful. Okay?
And I just have a suggestion, if we could have consistent adverbs. For example, so that we are.
Summing me.
Because just like we do with our, like we do with typical rubrics. You have that consistent adverb that it always begins with consistently, um, inconsistently, you know, so that, so they're under the categories and so that they, they are, those are our guiding guide words so that we keep those at the forefront of our brains for our executive functioning skills.
I, I, I agree.
Thank you.
All right.
That's wonderful. Thank you all.
But with links, it'll be one ultimately.
That would be wonderful.
Thank you for this time.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your work.
Thank you. I mean, I can imagine the time going into it.
I can.
Eagle scalp. And you're logging off then?
Yeah. I actually am gonna editorialize for just a moment here. You know, this, this document, these documents went out a month ago. We asked, we gave people ten days to respond and to give Jeff input. And some people came in at the last minute. We can't do that as a board. We can't do that to ourselves because we don't have time to read what he's done in response. And they don't, they shouldn't be expected to turn on a dime.
When you say the last minute, you mean right before the deadline?
Yeah, no, 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 I mean after the deadline.
Okay. Cause I can't.
I know.
If you want it earlier, you're gonna move the deadline up. Cause I'm giving mine before the deadline.
Like a grants professional.
When the deadline is put on.
That's fine, that's fine.
We have an obligation.
I agree.
To give staff the information.
I agree.
At that point in time. I really would like to say the staff has no obligation to incorporate what we say after that point in time because we weren't doing our job.
I agree.
So, just putting it out there.
Come on, we're gonna do our best.
I know you guys are doing a great job.
Absolutely.
And then for those of us who like collaboration.
At some point you gotta stop.
Yeah, I know. No, I agree.
Okay, next up.
All right, how are y'all doing? Do you need just a quick stretch and sit down? You all right? Okay. All right, I'm gonna read faces, so we'll just keep going. All right, so, um, thank you all for allowing us to be here. You'll notice I have Cindy here. We're gonna be talking about two additional items and then we will take a break and get ready for the action team meeting. The first item is the half penny sales tax oversight committee. So we'll talk a little bit about that. We were asked to facilitate a conversation. And then the next conversation will be relative to advisory committee membership and talk a little bit about qualifications and selection and all of that. So, and Cindy will be typing quickly. She said if it goes too fast, she may resort to pen and paper, but, um, on behalf of the 21st century, she's trying to stick with the technology. So, um, in your backup, you did receive, um, an item called proposals, sales tax proceeds. And so I'd like you to just, if you can, pull it up on your laptop. We will be referencing that pretty frequently today. So before we begin our discussion really about how are we going to proceed, I've asked Mr. Doted to provide us with some counsel related to board policy as it relates to this, this particular topic.
So.
Okay, so that's where we're at, okay.
So as you're all aware, which kind of coincides with the next item on the agenda, is we have a policy 1.20 called committee involvement opportunities. And one of the options, I may be getting ahead of myself.
No, please, go ahead. No, please.
One of the options that you all have is to add what would essentially be a sales tax oversight committee to that policy. Another option you all have is to create a new policy. I have some proposed language that theoretically could be added to 1.20, which I will put up there when we're ready to talk about that. I will just make you aware that the board's resolution specifies that the membership of the committee shall be established by board policy. And it essentially says that the committee oversees the use of sales tax revenues in accordance with the, um, the list of items that are. the list of items that are part of, um,
The project list.
Can you read that language again, please?
Sure. The membership of the committee shall be established by board policy. The committee oversees the use of sales tax revenues in accordance with the project list and provides periodic reports of such use to the board as established by board policy.
Okay, thank you.
The role of the committee in overseeing the implementation of the plan shall constitute an integral part of the plan and shall not be subject to repeal prior to completion of the plan. So that is what you all voted on back when the resolution was approved. So I'm here to answer any other questions because we do have some timing and logistics that are involved in all of this, so.
So the purpose is spelled out.
Purpose is spelled out, yes.
Well, yeah, but the purpose is not in alignment with what you just said. Because the purpose written here is that they will report to the public. Report to Lee County Community.
So on the proposal, the sales tax proposal, right? Absolutely.
Whereas what you just read is that they report to the board.
Right.
Which.
Which would be added to the meeting.
The board is included to the committee.
So we could, so remember, proposal is just that. This is some of the best thinking out there in terms of what other districts have done. Does not mean we have to be married to that. And so I'll defer to Mr. Dode. If that's in the language, then we should just copy the purpose directly from the language of the referendum. If that's what you're comfortable doing, that's, that's A okay with us.
Yeah, that's what I would recommend.
Okay. All right, so let's, so there we go. We've got item number one taken care of. Look at that, we're already ahead. Qualifications, so let's talk about that for just a moment. And then I have written down Mr. Dode just to go back at the very end and talk about incorporation of board policy or have our own separate discussion around that. We will not let that one go. But I would like to talk about qualifications. So if you look on the proposal, there are a multitude of communities out there that have adopted or have passed the referendum and through conversation with some of those districts and looking online for some of the others. There is a large amount of support around looking at a variety of folks to be on the committee. There has been, if you look at commonalities across these proposals, having a background in business, finance, construction, safety, anything that you're going to purchase in terms of the surtax, there is advocacy out there around looking at somebody that has some knowledge base in that area. There are also a couple that have community members at large. So you may say, you know what, we want a certain percentage of our committee to have some expertise in those areas. And there may be just some other folks we wanna have. So there, there, this is for your discussion, but we offered some ideas here in terms of qualifications.
Would you mind showing the proposal on there so that every, so that we're all.
For sure.
Have it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep. Pull that up.
I mean, we have it here, but.
I'm gonna kick ourselves off of here.
So I'm, I'm looking at your, uh, may I?
Please.
I'm looking at your qualifications, background in business, finance, construction, indoor, safety and security. So we're looking for someone to look at the money that came in, look at how it was spent and report to the public as to whether it was spent correctly. And I, so I'm not really clear on why construction, indoor, safety and security backgrounds would be useful in that. Unless, I mean, I, I would think we would need, uh, we would need construction, safety and security on the front end to give us some advice on what to do, what to purchase, what to build. But on the back end, if we're just looking at the money, why do we need safety and security and construction qualification?
Dr. Cuckel.
Well, I, I kinda see it in a different way in that, um, construction changes and best practices change and to make sure that within a particular project, that in terms of how we spend our money is we're getting the most for our money, first of all, and it's in the most effective ways in terms of current construction.
But don't we want that on the front end?
Well, yeah, but then you gotta.
And it's ongoing though.
On the rear end.
Yeah.
Okay.
You were, you actually at the end of it, like this, the New Springs High School, you're gonna have, um, a full audit at the end of this project, which we hope to get, you know, October. And that, that's by an auditor.
Right.
You know, outside auditing firm. So I'm thinking you're wanting something over and above that function for this.
Well, that's actually what, like in looking at the other, um, sales tax oversight committees across the state, that's basically what they do is they look at those audits and they go through the audits and they make sure that everything was okay and then they report to the public based on the audit. I mean, that seems to be, it, it seems to be a purely financial function. And, and that's kinda how I've been talking about it with the public because I believe it should be a purely financial function. I understand what you guys are saying.
Well, I, I'm not saying this to disagree with you, but I, but having watched you with the public, I think the, the message that the public hears is that you have a group that is going to be watching how those dollars are spent and reporting back to them. To me, that means more than really just.
A purely financial.
A purely financial audit. I'm wanting to know, you know, okay, what does an auditor really know about best practice in construction?
Right.
You know, I, I wanna know that people who've looked at this really know what they're looking at and can report back and say, you know, they, they really were super efficient with this project. Or you know what, they really, there, there's a better way of doing construction and this is what they should have done.
All right, so I guess, I guess where the disconnect is, I look at safety and security and we have a guy on the committee who is in the business of selling metal detectors. And he's going to criticize, I understand, and, and what you're saying is exactly what I envisioned. Best practices should definitely be part of this evaluation. But second guessing the, the what we did, um, in terms of the decisions that were made on the front end, I don't think is the function of that committee. Does that make sense?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, yes, please.
So, when we said 15 committee members, I have another thought about that. I do think that the board chair or designee should be on that committee.
Oh, there should be a board, board member representative on the committee.
A liaison instead of on the committee?
No, no, the board chair or, uh, what, one of the board members.
Or designee.
Should sit in on that committee and be a committee member.
I agree. Only just to come back and report to the board.
Yes. And here the conversation that took place during, during the, uh, process and, and decision making and recommendations.
So I'm a pain in the butt. Liaison, I, as a member of an advisory committee, I don't vote. So are you talking about a voting position on the committee?
Yes. A member.
Do we have another? Do we have another committee where we do that?
No.
Is that, is that a common practice? It just strikes me as odd because if they're reporting to us, how can we be a, a member of it?
I'm just worried about a board member in a split vote calling the.
Right.
With 15 members?
Yeah, but if it's 14, 14 and the, and the board chair is the deciding vote, then, then you've got, I think you have a public problem. I would rather see it as a liaison. I think it's essential that somebody from the board be participating.
Yeah, I think somebody should be on the committee.
So, so what we could do? Yeah, please. Yeah, for sure.
Just one other thing. It does say that the committee should be volun, it has to be volunteers. And board members are paid. I mean, so.
Right.
It says there, hereby authorize the establishment of an independent, which would.
I feel more comfortable with the liaison.
Liaison.
Oversight committee of volunteers.
Yep. So what we could do with the additional recommendations is, um, we had proposed having a school district liaison because there may be like a CFO or somebody where they would be very, um, attuned to answering questions about the expenditures, why was that spent versus that? So that we could tag on to that and say having a board liaison as well as a district liaison.
Just like we do for.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah. So thoughts on that?
I would just like to ask Mr. Dode to read the purpose again.
Sure.
Okay.
It says, um, I'll just read the whole thing. There is hereby authorize the establishment of an independent oversight committee of volunteers for the purpose of overseeing and approving the implementation of the plan, commencing upon approval of the surtax and extending through the date of completion of the projects to be funded under the plan. The membership of the committee shall be established by board policy. The committee oversees the use of sales tax revenues in accordance with exhibit A, which is the, the plan, and provides periodic reports of such use to the board as established by board policy. The role of the committee in overseeing the implementation of the plan shall constitute an integral part of the plan and shall not be subject to repeal prior to completion of the plan. So it has to be in effect for 10 years, which is.
Yes. Okay.
But members might change over that.
Oh, no, I think that's, yeah, absolutely.
Members are gonna be changing.
It is that they are going to ascertain that we're spending the money on what we said we were gonna spend it on.
Correct.
Period.
And report that to the board.
Right. And to the community, yes. So.
And I like, I do like the way you staggered the terms.
So just to, um, make sure we're clear on qualifications. So do we want to strike safety, security? I, I just, we need some direction on that, make sure.
That's fine. Can you make that bigger?
Sure.
Please.
Over on the right.
On the right, where the plus sign is.
Thank you.
Okay.
So I just have a question. So we have a hard enough time sometimes getting, uh, keeping people on their four year and two, you know, this seems to be a long time. So my thought was maybe having a couple alternates or something like that. So they have a core, I know they only meet, I think, what, twice a year, but I, I, it's just my thought. I, I worry that.
I understand if there is a change, you've got people in place that have the history.
And they don't know what, they come in and they all of a sudden, now they're gonna have to vote on something that they have not been to prior meetings and I don't know. And they're not up to speed.
Right.
I don't know. It's just my thought.
Yeah.
I do have some information on that when I was researching what other districts are doing. There, I saw at least one where they did have alternates and they were invited to every meeting, were expected to attend.
Right.
Kind of like an alternate on jury. Right. If they were asked to vote, they had that prior information. And they could be selected to take the place of someone who had to step down.
And then you would just replace the alternate.
And you may wanna have a, you know, many of them do have chair people, so there, the idea there, and then we would let them work on their process, obviously, we don't wanna get that far in the weeds. But, you know, to the, to the idea of, we want you to meet so, every semester, so you all decide the dates. And so collectively, they would decide, we're gonna meet in May and we're gonna meet in December. I'm just making it up. And what date would work best so that the committee would have the choice, but we would have an expectation that they meet at least twice a year. But you're right. I mean, things can come up, certainly. People get ill, children.
Right, exactly.
There's a lot of, a lot of things that can occur. I think the big, big thing that we were encouraged to do is keep it as an odd number with your voting members because it does sometimes come down to, you know, one side, then the other side. So you wanna be able to have somebody to break that tie.
That's why I suggested alternate versus.
For sure.
Cause then the alternate is a vote.
They're not a voter unless somebody's out.
Has to.
Yeah. Okay. So, please. Please.
The other committees, your board advisory committees permit the chair to appoint three individuals and the other board members two. So I don't know if you wanna follow suit with that or not. In addition. Yeah.
Right, correct.
In addition, the superintendent doesn't have any appointees on your other committees, so.
On that, there's one committee curriculum I know that he can make an appointment if he so chooses.
Yes. No, no. Um, it, it's just, one member shall be appointed by the head of the fire chiefs association. Oh, that's construction, excuse me. Sorry.
I know, another one of those.
That would be odd and critical.
It's the C I C.
Yes, it does. The student superintendent also appoint additional members to this committee to ensure that the interests of exceptional students are represented, so.
So what are your thoughts on that? Do you, are you comfortable with superintendent having an appointment? Are you wanting that to be a board chair? I think it's a, it's a fair point to discuss.
I think it should be the superintendent. It's his plan. I think he should have the opportunity to put, put someone on.
Ms. Fisher?
I agree.
Okay. Other thoughts? Please.
Well, I agree, especially when you consider the, his, his, um, his group of business people that he continually meets with. He has people that he, that he knows that are, that have the integrity, that have the respect. So, um, I think that's a powerful, that's a powerful piece as well.
Okay. So let's look at the 15 committee members and then I don't wanna lose what Ms. Juvenelli said relative to alternate. So business, or the 15 committee members as it stands right there, do we have consensus on that? Is there anyone that objects to the, that layout?
You mean the number 15?
Please, 15, yes. Okay. Everybody's good? All right. Thoughts on alternates?
Oh.
Please.
I like alternates. Um, I don't, and I was curious if we want to, each one of us have, choose, select an alternate.
Okay.
Because then if just.
They could sit in for either the four year or the, or the two year or the four year.
So that's just a thought.
So they would attend, right, please, they would attend and then, right, that's where I was going next. They're gonna attend and then they would not vote. They would understand that and then how long would the term be? So thoughts on that?
Well, how, how about staggering with the term of the, of the, of, of, you know, our terms, you know? And then so they would be staggered instead of.
So for the duration of your term of election? Is that what you're proposing?
Something like that.
Okay.
So then.
That's, I got it.
They're not.
Isn't seven a lot?
I mean, cause I think seven is a lot, but, but if you're alternating that, then that might not be, am I wrong?
I don't know. I, I think that's a lot of people.
It is a lot.
What if you had the board chair and the superintendent appointing alternate?
Yeah, board chair and a.
Then you have two. That would be a thought as well.
They need to be able to sit around the tables, so I think you have to keep that in mind. Everybody has to sit.
Yes.
At a level.
All right. So thoughts on the superintendent and board chair having an additional appointee to be in, to be.
I like that.
The alternate?
I like that.
Anybody object to that?
The only thing is the chair changes.
Right.
So would, how does that work?
So then that would evolve, you know, as the chairman.
Superintendent can change as well.
For sure.
So.
If it happens both ways, right, then that could evolve, right?
So then the next chair would appoint next alternate, should that alternate.
And it could be branded at, at, at an undefined term.
I think what she's saying is that the superintendent would, would appoint the alternate. If the superintendent leaves, that alternate stays in place unless he moves up or moves out, in which case the new superintendent would then have.
Come in.
Unlike one where.
But they stay for the length of their time.
They stay, right, correct. They stay, right, correct, yes, 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 okay. Alright, so, Mrs. Fisher, please.
So with the other, um, some of the other districts that have these oversight committees, do they have as many members on their committee, or did I notice that some of them had less?
Fifteen to twenty-one is what I saw. Wide variety, there's a wide variety, yes, and the encouragement was, for most of them, the odd number seems to work, and have a healthier number, because. Things happen, people move, and then you don't have somebody, and, you know, things just come up.
I think that's a good point.
Yeah.
And, and we won't run into the problem that we have with our other advisory committees in that they won't be meeting as frequently. You know, so there is more like, there is more of a likelihood that those people will be present for these meetings.
Okay, Dr. Cuckle?
I'm on the list.
Okay.
And, um, I have a little concern about N double A C P being mentioned.
Wait a minute, can, can we just finish this?
Yes, let's finish the, yes, if we could, the four-year, okay, so, four-year term, two-year term, we didn't also, we did not address that, and then I wanna go to Mrs. Morgan.
So I'm assuming we're doing this, so, somebody comes on for a four-year term,
somebody comes on for a two-year term, but that position then becomes a four-year term, so that you're, everybody is eventually, is, is ultimately serving a four-year term. The two-year term is just the, the stagger, to stop, to start.
Like we did with.
Right, right, so each member, right, would have a four-year term, and, uh, an appointee that's a four-year, and another one that's a two-year, and the idea behind that, that most of the districts like to do is you keep that knowledge going, so you're not rotating everybody off after two, or everybody off after four and starting over.
Right, exactly.
The two-year can.
After the first two years.
It, it can, it can roll, or if you appoint, or you may say, nope, um, I have a new appointee for two years. So it's totally your discretion at that point, but it, we maintain the four years, especially, they said, as you start off, because there's a lot of, lot of knowledge that needs to be attained as they're going through and understanding, and staff has time with them, and they would need to understand the pots of money and how this all works, so, please, yes ma'am?
And the one point that I do, I, you asked that, that as we look at this, that there be, that be clarified, and also, you made the statement that a, a, that a board member could decide, I'm going to select someone else as my appointee.
After a two-year term.
After a two-year term.
Or a four-year.
Or a four-year, so, so that may be, it needs to be noted in there, so that things are not assumed.
Yes, okay.
And someone is upset.
We will make a note of that, absolutely, good point. Okay, Mr. Dodig, anything else we need to talk about?
No, I.
Please.
Well, I don't know when to bring these things up, but, the question is, I think ultimately, when the board wants to bring this forward to a briefing and then pass the policy? So when would folks be appointed?
Right.
If the sales tax does pass?
Right.
Your other advisory committees, the folks are appointed during the summer, so I don't know if you just wanna stay with that, or somehow it needs to be different.
No, it should be, we should appoint them right before we start to collect the tax.
Yeah.
No, initially, correct, I understand that, I'm just looking forward.
And then going forward, right.
Moving forward. Yeah.
So their term, but shouldn't it coincide with when the tax begins and ends?
I, I agree.
So shouldn't it be?
Tax begins in January.
Right, so it should begin and end in January, because in ten years it will end in January. Okay, so instead of appointments made in November, we would move that to January two thousand nineteen? Well, the appointments would have to be made in December.
In December.
In December, okay.
Because it will end December thirty-one.
Okay, and then, the two-year term or the four-year term would start in January, and we would do the full length of the term, or we would, at the end of two years-ish, try to get it more in line with when you do your regular board appointees. Keep it at the January, okay, keep it December for January, alright, so we'll make a note of that. Alright, so let's go back to, I think where Mrs. Morgan was going next, um, which is representatives. So, in full disclosure, this was just stream of consciousness, this was, as many groups as could possibly come to mind, there may be others, there may be some, you say, you know what, different organization, what, um, most of the groups are looking at, most of the, uh, districts are looking at, is trying to have a wide variety of folks, looking at, keeping in mind, um, making sure that there's representation of our, uh, community, and so you wanna make sure you're sensitive, you know, to all those good things we'd always talk about, uh, with our students, uh, relative to diversity, et cetera. So, how about it, thoughts on this?
So my thought is, I'm gonna start out, my thought is that, um, this is volunteer, so obviously we're gonna have to get applications from volunteers, we can't just appoint. And, um, and then I think this list really becomes a list of people to whom we advertise, a group of people to whom we reach out for volunteers. I'm not looking at this as, we must have a CPA, we must have somebody from the pack, we must have somebody.
Exactly, yeah.
I'm just looking at this as, this is, these are the people we wanna reach out to, to find volunteers, and we would hope, when we, when, you know, when all is said and done, that we have a fairly representative, um, group.
Okay.
Okay, that's my, I spoke first.
Okay, so, Dr. Cuckle, and then, uh, Mrs. Fisher.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned that we have one, um, minority group specifically spelled out, that maybe we should say, um, minority, um, organizations, such as, you do have down here Hispanic chamber, and then there's the Haitian group.
And you also.
And so, uh, and down here where it also says Dunbar sororities and fraternities, I'm not sure that we should focus on that minority group without having a, a balance of, and our Hispanic population is certainly a bigger minority population.
For sure.
So it's just how we.
We'll shape that language, absolutely.
So, is it the board's intention to put this list in the policy? No, right?
No.
No, no.
Good, okay, that's what I thought I heard, uh.
It's for us, but it isn't, but it would be, um, a, a board list that we.
Yeah, a resource.
The information.
A resource piece that we go through, and I would just suggest that we, we may want to be sure that we have, it would be nice if we would be, if we would make sure that we have at least one person from each of the fi, uh, from each of the, um.
Appointments? Districts.
Districts, or, or even school zones, you know, something so that we make sure that we've got, so that we're seeing all of Lee County, a representative from all of Lee County on there. And also, um, I, I believe that as, you know, and we think of, as we think of diversity, we always go to color and nation, but we never think about people with disabilities.
Correct.
And so we may want to include, um, someone there, because they also look at things at, at a different mindset, and they also understand and get A D A, which I believe is an important piece.
Yep, sounds good. Okay, Mrs. Patrica. Can we get some feedback from, um, Jarrett, as to other minority groups that we could? Great idea.
That he would look.
And I was gonna say, if you all want to submit to me, just email me and other groups, and we'll use this as our pool, doesn't mean it's exclus, exclusive, because we said including but not limited to, so these will just be some ideas, so you send them to us.
Can you go up, please? So we said that this list is not required, this is not going, going to be part of the, the, um, policy. However, can we require us to appoint someone with business, finance, construction, or safety and security expertise? Like, can that be a requirement in terms of who we appoint?
Uh, we may not be able to find, I mean, I think we have to.
We, we'll be able to find fifteen people in a county of seven hundred and forty-nine thousand. Do you wanna make it a preference for that? How would you like to proceed?
I, I, I think that it, that's the way it should be stated, preferences for, but, you know, I think there are other business people that have a, the CEOs that have a background in this kind of thing that we could, uh, invite, that would not be specifically from a finance or construction. It does say business.
Business.
Yeah, business, I mean, do we want?
I just want it to be broad enough that, uh, there are a lot of very good people out there that could do that job without having a degree in one of those areas.
I agree.
So there's language in the other committees in the policy about making reasonable efforts, board members shall make reasonable efforts to ensure that at least one of, of his or her appointees is a minority. I mean, you could take that language, make reasonable efforts, that the individual has expertise in those things. Is that something? Okay.
Yeah, we could use some of the language you have that exists in your policy, and marry it, for sure.
Expertise in making sure that the, our construction, organs are built.
Because some of the people that questioned, uh, the transparency aspect are also members of the community who may not have those areas of expertise, but they would be heard by members of their community, and understanding that this is a very transparent process.
Right, for sure. Okay, other thoughts? Do we want, um? Mrs. Fisher? Sorry.
Please.
No, do we want board advisory committee members? Can we choose from our board advisory committees to sit on this?
But I think they still need to apply.
I agree, I agree, but I'm talking about adding to the list. So I'm gonna poke at that a little bit, because you already have them as board advisories, so do you wanna open up the pool of advisors? I'm just gonna poke the bear a little bit. Yes, ma'am.
Personally, yeah, it's great if they want to apply, but I believe they need to serve in one, either one capacity or the other.
Yeah, I, I've listened to you as a board many times about widening the net and being, listening to a wide variety of folks, and when you start to have duplicate members, I think it starts to close. It starts to close a little bit, in my opinion, so, you know, I'll put my facilitator's hat back on. Mrs. Fisher, please, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to give advice on that point, that the board policy does say that citizens may be appointed to serve, um, well, multiple terms, it doesn't say that they could be on multiple or not committees, but I suspect there's no prohibition against it, so.
Yeah.
So if you wanna put that in there.
For sure.
For this committee, we can do that.
I think we should.
Okay.
Does everybody agree? Okay.
Okay, good, alright, Mrs. Fisher?
I was just saying, I, I just think it's important to be careful that we get a, a representation from all across the counties, and, and several walks of light, so that there is that enhancement of the transparency.
Okay.
And I.
Yes. Okay, any other thoughts? So, um, just to make sure, this is our pool, but the board members will also go ahead and email additional folks, we'll check with Jarrett and some other staff members to see if, if we're missing groups. And then just finally, uh, we looked at the committee meeting at least once per semester, starting in May, because we understand the collection would occur starting in January of two thousand nineteen, so we want a little bit of time to go by for expenditures to happen, the end of the school year seems like the right time to do that, and then again, we would recommend, you know, the end of the first semester, but certainly giving the committee the latitude to do what they need to do on that. Okay, and then, our report to the community, um, we will reach, we will shape this, uh, conversation a little bit, because we talked about reporting to the community with copies to the board and to the superintendent, it's our understanding from the purpose, that it is a report to the board, also to the community, and that would be done at a public meeting, so it would not be a meeting with the chair or anybody like that, it would just be at a public meeting, so is everybody good with that? Okay, and then the designation of a school district liaison, as well as a board liaison. Are there any other considerations that we have not put up in the proposal?
Well, I have, um, the timing of this is, I think, important. Looking at the board calendar, um, you all really have three, well, actually four meetings, before the November election, so, um, not counting this evening. So typically, we pre-brief a policy, and I think this one needs to be, because there may be some rewording that needs to take place, and then a briefing, and then a vote, if we could get the pre-briefing on the September eleventh agenda, and I'm not sure if there's a workshop or a briefing that.
Don't we have a meeting before then?
We do, on the twenty-ninth. We can pre-brief it then?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so then we could, um, have the briefing on the eleventh, and then the board vote on the September the twenty-fifth, if that's.
I think sooner the public knows.
Okay.
What our intention is, and it's, you know, it's voted on better.
Okay. Alright.
Alright, anything else? We will also look at an application process, because I heard that, um, being discussed, and so we'll look into that with a couple of counties and bring that back to you, so you have that. Okay, any other recommendations, questions, or thoughts? Alright, now do you need a quick stretch break? You alright? Okay, alright, we're gonna keep moving. Alright, next item is board advisory committee membership. So what we'd like to do in this particular area is have a little conversation with you about the selection process, about qualifications, and, um, I'm gonna start by referring you to a couple of items in your backup. So one item is the community involvement opportunities, board policy one point two zero, um, and if you can pull it up on your computers and turn to page three, at the bottom of page three, it starts talking about district advisory council. Sure, yep, so, let's see, I think we're looking at, is it one thirty?
Yes.
Okay, yep, thank you, Rob. So, district advisory council, we're gonna move past that to finance advisory, and I wanna talk with you just about a, a couple of items, um, of, for discussion. One of the items that we were asked to discuss was qualifications. Do we want to start looking at, um, delineating, particularly in the areas of construction, finance, and even curriculum, um, the qualifications for, uh, individual members? And, um, one of the board members, uh, asked a question, so I did a little bit of homework, so you do not have this in your background, in your backup, but I do wanna share this with you. Hello, Mr. Toyper, how are you?
So, I was asked to talk with staff, um, and so I did, uh, construction advisory, we did, uh, ask Mr. Blerton, I'm sorry, Mr. Mora, to weigh in on this with his team, and, um, these were some suggestions around, um, qualifications in particular, if you look in blue, would there be an, an interest of the board to start looking at, you know, uh, we'd wanna have a licensed architect, we want an engineer, we'd want an interior designer, we'd want a construction manager with, uh, successful verifiable practice, and understanding that, um, that would be something we would be looking for, and the reason for this, I do believe, is making sure that we have the opportunity to have folks in the room that have an understanding of construction processes, so that they can provide, you know, counsel relative to project budgets, looking at R F Qs, folks that have experience doing that, construction schedules, and also helping us with short and long-term maintenance, uh, plans. So that is a conversation we wanted to start with, um, as it relates to qualifications, and just an example of what it could look like, okay? So I'll, I'll start over here with Mrs. LaRiviere, and we'll work our way around.
Just, excuse me, um, you might want to add licensed contractor?
Okay, these are some, yes, we will go ahead and add that, yes, please.
I would kind of include that one.
Okay, for sure. Alright, and these are just, I'm gonna share with you just some samples that, you know, that Mr. Mora came up with, there may be some others, and I would agree with you, we probably need to look and see if there are, are others to add.
Including subcontractors, because.
Okay, so.
Yes, please, everything you said.
Okay.
Requirements or qualifications, I think are really, really important. This last batch of applications that we got was, I know I've only been here two years, but some of the qualifications of some of the applicants were outstanding, and if we're, if I'm limiting myself to my neighbors and my friends, then I'm doing a disservice to the community. We really need to be focused on, there has to be clearly delineated requirements or qualifications for, for these committees, um, those that require it, anyway.
Yes, okay, Dr. Cuckle?
Wouldn't we say qualification preferences, which would, would I, would assume awaiting for those people that have these qualifications, but the possibility, if there aren't any people with those qualifications, to select someone else?
Other thoughts?
Yes, so in the, um, first paragraph of the policy, uh, line, starting on line fifteen, it says, "School board advisory committees shall consist of qualified members from the community, or students whose purpose shall be to provide input, advice, and support." So, we already know that we know people who are qualified, and I'll echo what Mrs. Patrica said in reading the recent, um, applications that were turned in, the qualifications of the people were outstanding.
Okay, so we'll make our way back around, Mrs. LaRiviere, and then Mrs. Patrica.
One of the difficult parts that we have, and I know it's gonna come down here under application and selection process, one of the problems that, um, frequently comes up is the area, hmm, we sometimes call some of those people that are qualified, and then they decide, sometimes it's when you go through the process of the list, that sometimes it just doesn't happen the way you would, um, like it to, and so that's where, I'm hoping there's some way that as we look at applications process for the future, we can make some changes to that application, so that, um, it would help.
Yeah, and, and I think you're exactly right, Ms. LaRiviere, as we start to think about qualifications, if there is a desire by this board, and we're hearing there's some support, and we'll make sure that we've got clear consensus, then we would start to build that into your application. So rather than just like, tell me about everything you do, um, what committees you serve on this, that, the other thing, you may wanna have some more targeted questions, for example, if we start to look at, you know, as part of our construction process, review process, we want to have somebody with an architectural background, with an engineering background, but, so we may wanna ask those questions, because I'm retired, let's say, I'm just, um, I've moved down here, I may not think, you know, to share that, and if I knew you were looking for someone with that particular background, I would check, I could check that box and go, oh yeah, that's right, I worked for that company forty years ago, and I did that work for five years. So if you decide on qualifications, for example, such as these, then that would be the opportunity to, to reframe your, your application, rather than just real open-ended, so, just a thought.
So instead of, the, the, no, I'm instead of, you, what did you say, qualification preferences?
Preferences, yeah.
So, I kinda look at this like, I believe we're at a point in this community where we can require qualifications, and when I look in the back of the room, if she's still there, she's not there, Dr. Creel, and, um, Trey Davis? We got them because you were patient, we got them because you got the right people on, in the right seats on the bus, right? Um, and I feel like we, as a board, at this point in this community, have a responsibility to get qualified people on these committees to really help us move forward.
Right, but we're not offering them a salary, they're volunteers.
No, we're not, but we, I, I think we have enough people who, who are willing to give at this point.
And I think that qualification preferences softens it a little bit, and I also think it opens up for people who may have experience in skilled trades, and may not be managers, or, you know, they may have some certifications, but they may not be a licensed contractor or architect, yet would still have valuable knowledge for that committee.
Right, and you would know what you're looking for, which would always, which would give that opportunity. Mrs. Juvenelli?
Well, and, so, I have a little question, the construction commit, uh, committee, are they, were they part of the site, picking sites for, so, why wouldn't you have a realtor, a commercial realtor on there?
Right, there you go, for sure.
Um, looking at development, and what's gonna be, um, I love, you know, I'm, I love neighborhood schools, and everybody loves neighborhood schools, we can't, the way Lee County is, we can't really have that, but we can still keep, you know, we can still look at the overall, I, I think our infrastructure here in Lee County is just, nobody had any thought and process, it was just random. So, I think we really need that piece, is, planning and development is huge, so, somehow that needs to be, to me, added there.
Yep, for sure, and planning.
Yep, for sure, and planning as well, absolutely. Okay, Ms. LaRiviere, and then we'll go to Mrs. Patrica.
This is just a thought, because you talked about planning.
Yeah.
Would be interesting if one of the liaisons, if there could be a liaison from planning, from the Board of County Commissioners?
Development.
From, from Lee County Development.
Government, and then...
Government, because there, at, at this point, we may need to do some collaboration, so we are looking at that better.
Well, we just need to be able to work with them and get, hear what's going on downtown, and what their future planning and development is, and there's that piece, we should be...
Thank you, Mrs. Patrica, and then Mrs. Morgan.
So, if you look at the Palm Beach County Construction Advisory Committee, it says that committee members shall come from the following groups, registered architect, registered engineer, certified general or building contractor, land or community planner, it's, it's a shall, and at the end, it says, "for community representatives at large." So we're ensuring that the vast majority of the committee members are qualified, and real estate brokers on there, by the way, where, where an attorney, a construction attorney, you know, we're making sure that we have qualified people there, but we're also taking care of those who might have an interest, or a love, or a, or whatever. But I, I feel like qualifications have to be a shall, not a may, at this point.
And I really did like theirs. I, I only printed the ones that I liked.
So, the, the suggestion there is to have some required, and then some at-large, perhaps, with, with an interest in that. So, thoughts about that, and then I wanna go to Mrs. Morgan.
You were talking about the county with the planners.
Yes, oh, so, Ms. LaRiviere brought up the business of having the county involved. We have an inter-local agreement with the county, and right now, we have staff who work very well with county staff, so I don't see the need to bring in another...
Okay, gotcha.
Another layer of that, okay.
But that, but making sure those components are shared with the committee.
For sure, and we, and we also have staff liaison, so, for example, folks from facilities, maintenance, the construction area, then that becomes that opportunity to have that conversation.
And I totally forgot about that.
So, the shall and the, and the at-large, who appoints them?
That has to be talked about.
Right, right.
I need clarification on the at-large. To me, it's a shall.
Well, it's, it's shall appoint one member who is a Florida-registered architect, shall appoint one member who is a Florida-registered engineer, and it goes one, 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 and then the last item is four community representatives at large. So it spells out, there are fourteen committee members, in this policy I'm looking at, there are fourteen committee members, and it spells out eleven of them, and then the last one is four community members at large.
Okay, so that gets totally away, away from then, our, everybody's appointing committee members, because we are now looking for expertise as opposed to geographic distribution. Is that, okay?
And there can be collaborative discussion, I would assume.
You could, you could, yes, and you could, you could arrange something like this when you receive your application, you go through, you're looking to pull these particular requirements, maybe you come around the table and you say, okay, construction committee, here's who we have, thoughts here, and then we bring that forward for board approval, perhaps at the next meeting, that's a thought.
Rubric, Steve.
And I, I agree with, with Ms. Patrica, that I think that the focus should be more on the qualifications, that we get the right people in the seats of the bus, not that they're, where they live in Lee County is really material, at this point.
Okay, Mr. Dodik.
Well, so how, in crafting a policy, which is what I'm always thinking about, how would we manage that? There's seven board members, currently, you each appoint, well, actually, there's sixteen on this committee. So you each appoint two, and the chair appoints three, and then there's the Fire Chiefs Association that appoints one.
Composition qualification, the Cork membership shall consist of fourteen members appointed by the school board, two appointees per board member, is what it says.
But he's looking at what we current, our numbers we currently have.
What I'm saying is, so then, how do they determine which board members appoint the at-large, at-large, excuse me, and the qualified folks? I, I wonder how they do, I mean, I could find out for you all how they do that.
That'd be great.
I, I think, I think that Ms. Carlin brought, the point is that we do, it would be done as a group, we would pick the, the architect, we would, as a board, we would, the engineer, collaboratively, we would pick all the qualified people, and then, then we'd take all the at-large ones, we'd all sit in a group, and, you know, how we, how they did it at the turn, they throw up the slideshow of all the people, and you, and you pick your favorite ones, and then you narrow it down, and everybody gets consensus, and you whittle down, and you start moving it down till you get four, and everybody works on consensus. We do it collaboratively.
We would have to be...
So we all pick it.
And that would give you the opportunity to be...
Not, not telling that, right.
Yeah, there you go.
And that would give you that opportunity, look at minority participation, look at demographics, so you would have opportunities to have that conversation collaboratively, just a thought. And you would probably wanna use some sort of a rubric prior to that meeting, so you would, you would have your topic. Which we would be happy to help you with.
Well, I'm thinking staff does the screening, right? I mean, you're not gonna let us look at somebody for the Florida-registered architect position if they're not a Florida-registered architect, right?
Right, so we do some vetting, and that's why this may be a good form, form for us to do that, please.
Are we talking about to put this in place for this?
No, no, no.
No, 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 no.
Next year.
And anxiety level lowered in the back of the room.
I just saw her face, and she's like, hello? This comes quickly?
But we can think about this as we're doing appointments for this year.
Your face was great. Alright, I saw her hand over here, I'm sorry.
I already forgot.
Okay. Okay, yes, ma'am. Can, can I move on to this year, or we, because I wanna address her?
Well, we won't talk about, I think, we've talked about construction, we need to talk about finance.
Yes, yes, if we could, and then curriculum, there was also one, yes. So with finance, again, this was discussed with Mr. Blerton, these were some initial thoughts, again, just some examples, this is not an exhaustive list, but same type of, of item, what is, what's the purpose, what are some sample qualifications, some examples of responsibilities, and then a similar selection process.
No, it's not, we're talking about full and dollar payment.
Yeah, it's really not.
So, thoughts on qualifications, responsibilities, and or selection process? Yes, ma'am?
My thought is to ask Greg, and Dr. Creel, and...
Mr. Mora?
Mr. Mora, to come up with a list similar to that, that which is found in the Palm Beach County policy for each of their specific areas, and, and then, I'll go from there.
And this was their initial list, this was just some, these were initial thoughts, we would certainly, you know, entertain, if we had some more time, to put some more thought into it, and to give us some more opportunity to flesh some of these out, but we wanted to give you a glance of what this could look like, and then we will certainly go to work on it, and bring you back a very robust process. Okay, thoughts?
And I wouldn't expect Greg's to be as detailed as construction advisory, because construction advisory has a lot more.
For sure, for sure. Mrs. Fisher, I saw your hand.
Yeah, so I, I just have a question about how we advertise this, so then we're gonna list the qualifications when we advertise, before the applications commence, and then the applications will be...
So there'll be separate applications for each committee? And actually, I wish people, and I wish they would apply for just one, and, or if they, because then you don't have to go through that thing of their first, second, third, and fourth choice list, that's another problem that we have with the application process as well, that we have now.
So thoughts on qualifications, yes, more other thoughts? Is this in line with what you would like to see, are there other things you'd like to see in terms of qualifications?
Well, I'd like to have, I mean, I'd like to see, you know, again, as Ms. Patrica said, someone, you know, to me, to break it out, to say, I'd like to have somebody that's got bond experience, someone's got their Series Seven, somebody who's got, you know, experience in, in actuaries, I mean, I'd like to have people that have specific, you know, specificities in some of the things we're doing, you know, our bond management, our, our, our cop spending, you know, public sector financing, those type of things, you know, that actually know, that are, you know, specialties, that are not just, you may be in financial services, but if you're just in private investment, it's not what we do, you know?
So we will, we will make note of that.
Do you like to try and learn, to see what kind of a response we would get from volunteers on such specific qualifications?
So that's, that's a good question, how would you all like to handle that?
Well, I, I would like to just, when I got on the board and I was asked to do this, I reached out and asked people, asked organizations to make recommendations to apply, and I think once we have what our expectations are, it's a lot easier to, you can reach out to the chamber, you can reach out to BIA, you can reach out to whomever, and say, we are looking for candidates with, you know, volunteers.
You know, Garrett with the Bankers Association, and all the industry associations.
I think we would have, no problem.
I agree. Once a month throughout the school year is very useful for most people, busy people.
Okay, so, any other questions or comments about finance advisory? And we will certainly flesh this out for you, and get you something, you know, that's a little, little meatier. Alright, so curriculum, we did the same thing with Dr. Creel, had some opportunities to talk with her, certainly looking at qualifications, so the desire there was to look at some folks that had some experience in pre-K through grade twelve education, to have that to be the bulk of the committee, with forty percent being at-large members. The rationale behind that, well, let me talk about responsibilities, then we'll go back about rationale, making sure that we are providing her and her team with sound advice on academic programs, educational tools, and materials, the, the concern exists, when all of us have been to school, we come in and we provide counsel, and sometimes that's helpful, and sometimes there's a higher level of expertise that could and should be expected. And then, I, I love this, I thought it was tremendously creative, to participate in learning walks in the schools, so that, the paradigm I have as a student may have changed in the last thirty, forty years, I know it has for me, so, getting out and walking in the schools and understanding the teachers, the children, what they're dealing with, the curriculum, what it looks like, not just on paper, but when it's actualized in the, in the classroom, and we would ask for that a couple of times a year, so.
I'd like to have this idea too, because then it lets them know when they are applying, what their expectations are, so that doesn't, so then that may, that will mean the freedom to be available during the day.
Yes, and only a couple of times, we would not require that, like, monthly, it may be twice a year, but just to give them a little opportunity to see what today's classroom looks like, and then provide, you know, maybe a higher level, level of expertise, or just knowledge base, you know, we wanna be able to increase people's knowledge bases, so that's a thought. Any other comments on purpose qualifications or responsibilities?
I like the breakdown of the expertise and the at-large, because then that gives parents who live with the curriculum in the evening, an opportunity for input.
Yes, for sure.
I think that's a critical piece of, critical curriculum advisory committee.
Absolutely, and when you look at the sixty percent, you know, it wouldn't have to be necessarily somebody right now, you could have a retired educator, you could have someone in higher ed who has experience in there, so there's a, there's a lot of ways that that could show up, it doesn't just have to be current teachers or administrators. Yes, sir?
I, I'd like to throw out there too, is it maybe a potential that we have a, a designee from our student advisory committee to serve on the curriculum advisory committee, so that they could actually, they're, they would be tasked to go back to their student advisory committee, but bring that link in closer, and bring our student advisory committee integrated with our curriculum.
That's a great idea.
Voice of the customer.
And then, my question would be, I would love to see, I don't wanna see excluded people who are mathematicians, people who are practicing scientists, people who are, who have an, an interest in what we are doing in the schools, but may not be educators. Would that fall under the, that would fall under the forty percent at large, but I, I would love to see that spelled out.
Subject matter specialists.
Right, for sure, that's great, okay.
I do have a clarifying question.
Please.
Experience in pre-K through grade twelve means what? As someone who sits here as the school board attorney, well, that's what I'm wondering.
So how about working experience?
Working experience.
Yeah, working experience.
Are you talking teaching experience, are you talking...
Yeah, we'll, we'll clarify that with, yeah, with this, with Dr. Creel, but more than likely...
And it could be teacher or a pair of professionals, depending on what they did as a pair of.
Yeah, there's a, I see your point, because it does open it up very widely to a wide variety of support staff as well, okay.
I think we would ask Dr. Creel to break that down, as we've asked the other two to break it down, and also, are we forgetting post-secondary?
She included that, she said it, but...
So we said, many of our folks in that area that may have an interest in curriculum may have had some experience in pre-K through twelve, would not preclude them from participating. But if I had experience in pre-K through twelve, because here's what I'm providing expertise around, pre-K through twelve, so if I had experience in that, that could be part of the sixty percent, if not, that may be a subject matter expert, and that would go in the forty percent.
But is it important for us to know what's required post-secondary to shape curriculum?
Oh, for sure, yeah, absolutely.
Dr. Creel stood up, so I don't know if she wants to...
Dr. Creel, I can't see you, come on up here.
Thoughts? Thoughts, listening. So, I appreciate the fact about the post-secondary piece, and that really was where the, the suggestion came in, is being a part of the forty percent. Sometimes you have people, yes, we want to see that pre-K through twenty, or, you know, that matriculation piece, but when we're really looking at programs that are K-12 to provide advice on, people that have not lived in that world don't necessarily know what that looks like, and again, that speaks to why we were saying, come out and see what that school looks like now, and that was, I mean, we, we want and we need this, this expert advice, whether they be your scientist and others, but I, sometimes, we're, we're up here, and we're not able to get truly into understanding specifically what we're talking about, about K-12, and if we've not been in that arena, it's, it's hard to understand and provide support and advice.
Okay. Yeah. Agreed.
Okay, all good questions, wow. Look at us, we're even, we're, we're doing great. So any other comments or suggestions or recommendations relative to curriculum? Okay, so there are two other committees, three other committees, we certainly have district advisory, we can entertain some comments around that, typically how that works, as we all know, is one person is selected out of the school advisory council, elected by the school advisory council, and they come down here and provide counsel. Is there any, we're, we're not advocating a particular change in that area, is there any discussion or appetite for that at the board level?
Just if we could try to make sure SAC meetings are not held on board meeting nights, I know I've said that before, but really bothers me when I have to miss SAC meeting because I have to be here, so.
Yeah, yeah, we continue to work with our schools about that, we do, for sure. Please, yes, ma'am?
And it's just to go along with the whole SAC component, we really, really, really need to do whatever we can to assist our schools, to make sure that they are implementing their SACs to the true form and what it was intended to be used, and that we are also providing, and not assuming, that everyone is trained and knows how to do that properly, and then also that we are, we are assisting them for finding community members to be part of it, because this is why they stop, they don't want it to be just the principal saying what they wanna do and what's happening, they want to be actively engaged, and if they are not actively engaged, why be part of it?
Right, absolutely, it's an excellent point, I actually had a couple principals call me last year, and we were able to get community members that we were familiar with that could go and serve on those committees, so that's an excellent point, I appreciate that.
And including chairs not being SAC members.
For sure, yeah. Okay, anything else, Mrs. Morgan?
Just a curiosity, do we have something that describes what the role of the DAC rep is?
Believe it is, in, on our website.
We did that when I was first on DAC, we did that.
Yes, the DAC representative and the alternate, I believe we do have that, and we do go through that at the DAC meetings, and we also will be reminding principals, I have an email that's ready to go out to them, yeah. And we've been working a lot on attendance too, over the last year, a lot of friends that are principals, but sometimes they weren't happy when I called, it's that Denise again calling to remind me to send my, make sure my DAC rep is there, and, and in all seriousness, what we share with them is, we just want them to be privy to the information, like, for example, Dr. Atkins came out last year and did a series on safety, right after Parkland, and, and we had some really good responses, but we had a number of schools that were, you know, didn't have a rep, and so, the next meeting, we had great attendance because that word got out, so that was terrific.
And I found that board member visiting the SACs increased the participation at DAC, so there's a lot to be said about our being, visiting and being part of SACs and showing an interest.
Yeah, for sure. The other two committees are continuous systemic improvement, Cindy is actually the liaison to that, I know we're always looking for folks that have that mind... liaison to that, I know we're always looking for folks that have that mind toward continuous improvement, but we didn't feel the need to have a particular qualification for that, unless you feel that's a requirement.
I don't feel it's a requirement, but I think, again, it would be a prompt for people who have a skill set or a background and don't know what, whatever this committee is, but they see that skill set, and they say, well, there's a match.
Could be a preference, could be a preference, right?
Yeah, yeah.
For sure.
Or just looking for experience.
Lean six sigma, or something in that, in your background, for sure, okay? And then equity and diversity, so, anything that you can think of in terms of specific qualifications, beyond what we have?
I, I just think that it would be nice if we had representative on that, on ADAC that also included people from our ESA parents, and our community members that represent the thoughts and mindset of E, our ESA population, because that is part of the whole equitable and diverse piece that we need to embrace as well.
We can make a note of that as well. Anything else?
Well, can I talk about this year?
Yes, ma'am, please.
When, tomorrow, is tomorrow too late? Mary's really, really, really concerned that we're going to get our choices to her too late, so can we commit to getting them to her by the end of the week? Is that okay, or is that too late?
That would be nice, because I have to get everything to Jen.
There's a lot of work.
By August twenty-first.
Okay.
So, whoever you choose, and I'll send you your sheets to show you how many you need to choose, okay, I have to be able to contact them, make sure they still want to do it, and then get agenda ideas.
So is the end of the week sufficient, or do you need to do it sooner?
How many are rolling open?
Oh, there's.
That's where, once we get her sheet.
Go ahead and have to replace at least one on each committee, and then we have had some people drop out, so I'll, I'll show you who's going to need to replace it.
So if you see Mary after the meeting, then she can, she can bring up the speed on that, okay?
By Friday at noon?
You've got it, okay.
By Friday at noon.
Okay.
And then, may I ask the board to, although we don't have a new policy in place, and we don't have specific qualifications or specific categories listed, can we hold true to each other that we will follow these general, these general guidelines, as were set forth in this presentation, for this year's appointments?
To the best that we can.
Yeah.
Logistics, we obviously have the change for the, to the policy for the committee regarding the sales tax.
Yes, yes.
There's a lot more legwork that seems to be needed for these other changes, so they can come later, is that okay?
Later, yes, yes, yes. We were going to ask a proxy timeframe on this, and we know that you're moving forward with this year's committee, so we would ask you for, maybe a little extra time, to be able to pull that together.
So essentially, we're talking about a separate policy.
Yes, I think so.
Rather than bringing the whole policy forward, I think we're going to just go with a separate policy.
For the sales tax.
For the sales tax, yeah.
Yes.
And, I also, it occurred to me, thought occurred to me, that it, if we do all of the briefing, and we go through all of the components, we need to have that ready to go, so that that policy can be, because we want to have people, we want to appoint people, we need to have, in other words, do we wait till after the election to have the vote on the policy, so it's ready to go, or do we vote on the policy before the vote?
No, you've already agreed.
I'm sorry, I may, I'm sorry.
You may have stepped out.
It happened in September.
Yes.
Thank you, I apologize.
No worries at all.
All right, Susan, what do you need?
Okay, Susan, yes.
Can you give Mary the names, give her a couple, extra names, in case those people require.
Send it to you electronically too.
Okay.
Electronically.
And somebody else may pick them.
We have what we need, y'all, thank you very much, thanks for sticking with us, we really appreciate it.
Thank you guys, because we got a lot done, and really appreciate the staff who were here and participated, a lot of good stuff, guys.
All right, thank you.
And Mary, you sent us the Canigan list.
Kathleen, do you want, Kathleen, do you want to get to the order with them real quickly, anything good of the order, or just?
Really?
Folks, I, my bad, my bad, we still have good of the order, does anybody have anything for good of the order? All right, seeing none, we're adjourned.
Okay, thank you all.